I'd like to call the regular meeting of this Milton City Council for Monday, July 20, 2009, to order. Will the city clerk please call roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the July 20, 2009, regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearings or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on that item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in order that the speaker cards were received by city clerk staff prior to the meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you will have 30 seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or a general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by city clerk staff. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, booing, cheering, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you would expect to receive yourself. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Present.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey.
Present.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Tina Diaversa.
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tart.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome everybody here tonight. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Our first item is approval of the meeting agenda. This is item number 09895. Staff has the following recommendations for council's consideration. Number one is, under reports and presentations, we ask that we remove the presentation by the Milton Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail Committee and place that on the August work session. Two, staff would like to remove item number one under new business, which is approval of a resolution adopting the partial plan update, the community assessment, and the community participation plan of the City of Milton, 2008-2028 Comprehensive Plan, item number 09892. And third, we would like to add an executive session to discuss potential litigation. And Mr. Mayor, our city manager would like to make some comments at this time.
Sure. Go ahead.
Mayor and Council, if I could, before you act on that, on those statements that Jeanette just made, I know there's been some question as to why staff is recommending or asking for removal of the partial plan from tonight's agenda, and that was something that we actually looked into and something that we really evaluated along with the Chair of CPAC. It's something that I'm going to let Alice speak to real quick, just so you know what our thought process was with that and why that request is coming forward tonight and where we think our energies are better spent somewhere else based on timing. But Alice, would you mind?
Okay, the simple answer is because we are so close to having the community agenda completed, which is the actual comprehensive plan, we thought it was best to focus our effort on that document and not a formal adoption of the partial update. Everything that you've seen in the partial update will be included in the community agenda. It would maybe, it would be revised some based on the visioning session and the land use charrette. This document, as most of you know, was simply put before this body back in December as a way to satisfy DCA for the timing of the completion of the comprehensive plan. And I know that there were some concerns and some questions with the partial update in moving this approval forward. So, in a discussion with Mr. Ragsdale, we decided that let's not kind of regurgitate our efforts on this document. We should be focusing on the community agenda. We've checked with DCA. There is no penalty for it. It's just that when the community agenda is approved and accepted by DCA, the resolution will then identify the community assessment and the citizen participation program. So, and also, the community agenda will be finished within 45 to 60 days.
Thank you, Ms. Wakefield. Is there any other items to be considered?
I can ask a question.
Julie, go ahead, and then Alan.
Just based on that input, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to ask this question, but my question has to do with if we remove this this evening, are we still replacing the Focus 2025, or we're leaving the Focus 2025 in place until we get the finality of the document?
That's correct.
Okay, so we wouldn't be replacing anything?
No.
We'll keep our current land use map intact?
That is correct.
Alan, go ahead.
That was my question. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as recommended by staff.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tart, second by Councilmember Diaversa, to approve the meeting agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay. Next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the council in conversation. When your name is called, please step forward and state into the microphone your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Jerry Allen? And there's a document that's being distributed that he asked to be submitted.
Everybody got one? How y'all doing? I'm Jerry Allen. Some of the people here know me, some people don't. Recently took on a contracted job.
Excuse me, Mr. Allen, would you mind stating your address for the record?
My business address is 1064 Union Center Drive, Suite B-15. Okay, my turn again? Okay. Recently submitted for a sign permit for customer mine over at 12990 Highway 9. Did all the paperwork, provided everything the county wanted. Everything went just fine. I go to pay for permits. What do y'all think a signed permit should cost? Just a rough guess. Nobody know?
Again, please feel free to make your comments.
Well, let me make this comment. I've been in sign business since 1981. I've done signs in Chicago, New York, Boston. Never, ever have I had a signed permit costing $750. I realize it's a two-part where they had a structure permit, which was $480.88. The last time I did a structure permit solely was in Gwinnett County, $30. The last three pages you'll see I have permits for Forsyth County, Cobb County, Douglas County. All three of them basically the very same sign we're talking about here. As a matter of fact, this one sign-wise is smaller than all of those. You'll see that Cobb County was $150, Douglas County was $182, and Forsyth County was $50. Don't want to be adversarial, and I don't know why other sign people haven't come and talked to y'all about this. Actually, I should not really worry about it because my customer is reimbursing me for the price of the permit. But this is just totally unbelievable. Not a lawyer. Don't make lawyers' wages. Three-quarters of $1,000 just is not quite throwaway money to me or to my customers. I think that somebody needs to take a look at this issue and say, what is not right in I know that it's partially based upon what Alpharetta used to charge, but Alpharetta has extremely high permit costs because they used to have freelance inspectors, and they paid them a 40 percent commission to do the inspection. Since 1983, they have not used the freelance inspectors, but they still had high prices for inspections, but never anything even approaching this. Highest I ever paid in Alpharetta was $360, and I was aghast at that, and that was in 1987 or '88. But anyway, I wanted to approach the city, let them know about this, and it might be a good time to look at it and say, what is right and what is wrong? And I appreciate y'all giving me your time. If I seem adversarial, please ignore it. I'm easy to get along with, ask anybody but my wife. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That completes public comment.
Let's move on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please sound the items?
Item number one is approval of the July 6, 2009, regular meeting minutes, agenda item number 09896. And item number two is approval of financial statements for the period ending June 2009, agenda item number 09897.
I have a motion and a second.
I move to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Tart, second by Councilmember Hewitt.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Moving on to reports and presentations. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the item number one was transferred to the August work session by motion and vote, and so we will, there are no items under first presentation, sir, so we'll move to the alcohol beverage license application public hearings. And that first item is approval of an alcohol beverage license application for Marquis Restaurant Group, Winward, doing business as Cha Cha Bunga, Cuban Grill, located at 5250 Winward Parkway, Suite 111, Milton, Georgia. The applicant is Yvonne Cranford for consumption on the premises of Wine Malt Beverages, postponed from July 6, 2009, item number 09891. Ms. Stacy Inglis?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The applicant has followed all of the rules and regulations that the city has put forth, and we recommend approval of this license.
Any questions from council, Ms. Inglis? Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any council discussion on this? None? Do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the alcohol beverage license application, agenda item number 09891, license application for Marquis Restaurant Group, Winward, doing business as Cha Cha Bunga, Cuban Grill, located at 5250 Winward Parkway, Suite 111, Milton, Georgia.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Diaversa, second by Councilmember Thurman. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Next is approval of an alcohol beverage license application for J&amp;D Restaurant Corporation, doing business as The Red Hen, located at 5310 Winward Parkway in Milton. The applicant is David Rutledge for consumption on the premises of Wine Malt Beverage, item number 09898. Ms. Stacy Inglis?
This applicant has also followed all of the rules and regulations of the city, and staff recommends approval.
Is there any questions from council, Ms. Inglis? Any public comment?
No public comment, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any council discussion? Hearing none. Do I have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the alcohol beverage license application for J&amp;D Restaurant Corporation, DBA, The Red Hen, located at 5310 Winward Parkway, Milton, Georgia, agenda item 09er-89er8.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Moving on to our zoning agenda. Will the city clerk please read the rules and sound the next item?
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. The petitions will be heard in the sequence listed on the posted agenda. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by opposition. The opposition will be allotted a total of 10 minutes to present its position. If time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains within the allotted time. City clerk staff will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in order that the speaker cards were received by city clerk staff. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. The planning commission heard the rezoning agenda items and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. In addition, the applicant shall not submit material to the council during the meeting unless requested to do so. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action, being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the planning commission meeting. A violation of the relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the planning commission meeting, the city attorney's office strongly suggested you have someone speak on your point of view. Our first item on the zoning agenda is ZM09-01 slash VC09-03. This is 13940 Atlanta National Drive by Aliane Time, represented by Stephen Rothman of Wilson Brock and Erby, LLC, for a modification of Condition 1E, which is Z85-181, to reduce the 100-foot perimeter setback to 33 feet, and a concurrent variance to reduce the minimum setback from 100 feet to 33 feet for a private court. Article 19.3.8.1. First presentation on this item was July 6, 2009. This is agenda item number 09890. Ms. Alice Wakefield?
The subject site is a single-family resident, and the applicant is requesting a modification of Condition 1E to reduce the perimeter setback from 100 feet to 33 feet. The applicant is also requesting a concurrent variance to the minimum setback from 100 feet to 33 feet for the installation of a private recreation court. The recommendation of staff is approval conditional of both the modification of the approved condition of zoning and the concurrent variance. I will now turn it over to Ms. Robin McDonald to expand upon it.
Good evening, Council. As Alice had indicated, this is a zoning modification and concurrent variance. I'll just go through some of the staff recommendations and observations. This lot, as you can see, is a triangular lot in shape with two of the three property lines adjoining streets, one being the New Providence Road, as well as the primary street frontage within the subdivision Atlanta National Drive. Based on the fact that the lot is triangular in shape with multiple front yards, a 20-foot drainage easement and septic drainage field limits the location of the proposed recreational court, which is basically a basketball slash tennis court. Staff recommends approval conditional of ZMO901 to modify Condition 1E to provide a 33-foot building setback. In addition, staff will restrict the reduction in the building setback to where the recreation court is located. In regards to the concurrent variance, to reduce the minimum setback from 100 feet to 33 feet for a private recreational court, Article 19.3.8.1. The City of Milton zoning ordinance requires that private recreational courts be located outside of any minimum yard. Based on the zoning ordinance's requirement, the applicant is seeking this concurrent variance. It is staff's opinion that this request to reduce the setback for a private recreational court does not offend the spirit or intent of the ordinance, or in this case, the condition required in Z85181 to provide a 100-foot building setback, which is to reduce the negative impact of the proposed development on surrounding properties. With this specific property, the adjacent property to the CUP is the Capital City Golf Club Golf Course. The portion of the golf course is a largely heavily wooded area that is not utilized by the golf course, and any activity from the recreational court would not be heard or seen by the club's members. Staff notes that on Friday, this past Friday, we received a note from the vice president of the Board of Directors of the Capital City Club indicating that they were not opposed to these zoning mod or variances. Based on the triangular shape and size of the property, which requires two frontages, a drainage easement and septic drainage fields limit the location of a recreational court on the lot and creates an unnecessary hardship. Also, if approved, it is staff's opinion that allowing the recreational court in the minimum setback will not cause a substantial detriment to the public good and surrounding properties, since the only surrounding property of the CUP is the Capital City Club, which again is heavily wooded, as mentioned above. The proposed court should not be heard or seen by residents or visitors passing the property. Lastly, it is the staff's opinion that if this concurrent variance is approved, that public safety, health, and welfare are secured, and substantial justice will be done because the proposed court is secluded and appears it will not have a negative impact on the adjacent property owners. Other single-family residential homes are not adjacent to or nearby the court. Therefore, staff recommends approval condition of VCO903 to reduce the minimum setback from 100 to 33 feet for a private recreational court. The Arbrists and myself took a site visit to the property, and in your package you'll see several pictures of a lush, very nicely wooded lot. And I was concerned about possible trees being affected as far as, there will be trees affected, but none of those trees are specimen size. In addition, the site is heavily wooded and meets tree density requirements, so the Arbrists has no opposition to this request of reducing that buffer. And also, I would like to say that I have a letter from the Homeowners Association Board of Directors stating their support of this variance as well in modification. So in conclusion, it is opinion that the applicant's request to modify Condition 1E to reduce the perimeter setback to 33 feet for a private recreational court and to reduce the minimum setback for a private recreational court to 33 feet meets all of the variance considerations required for approval. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of ZMO9-01 to modify Condition 1E and VCO9-03. That concludes staff's comments.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Is there any questions from council to staff?
I have one question. Robin, what's the distance between where the property line of the owner is to the golf course? In other words, I know that's a heavily wooded area, but what's that distance?
I do not know. I don't know where this golf court, I mean, in the aerials, it's nowhere nearby, but I couldn't give you a specific distance. And as I said, we have support from the Capital City Club.
Any other questions? Julie?
Looking at the location map, it appears that there's a stream potentially on site.
That is, also, Mark Law looked at that. It goes in the front and parallels the street. It's not a stream. It's basically a drainage basin, drainage. It's not a stream. He's been on site.
Because it's depicted as potentially a place in which water runs.
Correct. I mean, many times the GIS might indicate a stream, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's a true stream.
Regardless of how we would debate the definition of stream, does this, is the setback in the variance request impacting this at all?
No.
Thank you.
I want to do a question.
Yes, Robin, where is the nearest, the closest, single-family residence to where this is?
I would say it would be right across the street on the subject site's street name, which is, I always forget.
Atlanta National.
Atlanta National, thank you. Yes, I would say that the nearest house would be that one, because behind it is the guard house and the entrance to the actual subdivision. So it would be approximately across the street.
Have there, has staff received any negative comments from any affected?
None at all. We do send out notices in time for the individuals to be notified at the community zoning information meeting, and nobody appeared to that meeting. So, and the sign was erected in due time and per the ordinance, as well as notices sent out, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions for staff or open up to public comment?
I have one other question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just looking at this, would there, any of the clearing, would that create a view of any of this cleared area from New Providence Road, or is it all far enough off the road that you wouldn't see that clearing?
It's far enough off the road. It's close enough toward the street, and it's very heavily wooded. In fact, when we posted the sign along New Providence, you can't see through, at least in the summertime, you cannot see anything.
Right, so it's far enough, it's not going to negatively impact the scenic view along New Providence Road?
No, no. And there's also, well, there's not a 100-foot buffer, but because it's along a public right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. At this point, let's hear from those speaking in support of the zoning modification. Do we have any comments there for the applicant?
And there's a document being distributed at this time that shows the location to the nearest house. There's only one, we're passing it down, sir.
My name is Tony Tripoli. I'm with Homes by Design, 1266 West Paces Ferry Road, Atlanta, 30327. That aerial photo there should show where the homes are in relationship to this project. The way, if you look at the acreage there, I would say it's probably at least 500 or 600 feet of woods before it reaches the Capital City Club.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant? Do we have any public comment?
That's the only card I've received.
Okay, do we have any?
None in opposition either, sir.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then. Is there any council discussion?
Given that staff has shown hardship in this case, triangular shape with multiple front yards, septic drainage field, drainage easement, and given, I like those words that staff used, that the public health, safety, and welfare is being secured, I would like to propose that we approve agenda item number 09890, ZM09-01, VC09-03, 13940, Atlanta National Drive, by Aliuan BM, sorry, is that you? Represented by Stephen Rothman, Wilson Brock and Erby, LLC, Rothman, for the modification of Condition 1E to reduce the 100-foot perimeter setback to 33 feet and a concurrent variance to reduce the minimum setback from 100 feet to 33 feet for a private court.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tart, second by Councilmember Diaversa. Do we have any council discussion?
Yes, Mayor. I'm assuming it's going to be conditioned based on staff's recommendations?
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you. I will make a friendly amendment based on staff's recommended conditions. Thank you.
Councilmember Diaversa, second. Mr. City Attorney, are we okay with that?
We are with the original second or reseconding. That's.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Our next item is U09-01 slash VC09-01 at 13120 Arnold Mill Road, by Frank Schaefer, The Landscape Group Incorporated, to obtain a use permit for landscaping business at 1.74 acres at a density of 3,908.04 square feet per acre, Article 19.4.27. Applicant is also requesting three-part concurrent variance. First, number one is to delete 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the west property line from the right-of-way of distance of 140 feet, 12H.3.1, Section C1. And two, to delete the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the east property line from the right-of-way for a distance of 140 feet, 12H.3.1, Section C1. And three, to allow a sign located less than 10 feet from the right-of-way, Article 33, Section 21C. Agenda item number 09813. The first presentation was March 2, 2009. Last deferral was on June 15, 2009. Ms. Alice Wakefield? Ms. Alice Wakefield?
Okay. Staff is asking that this matter be deferred for sixty days until the, September the 21st City Council meeting to allow the applicant additional time to provide a new survey site plan.
Are there questions for staff and council?
I guess my only question is, how many times do we defer this before we have to take some kind of action on it, or can we just defer it every sixty days?
Well, it, it can be deferred, um, of course, subject to the requirement that justice delayed is justice denied. At some point, we do have to hear it. But we can, we can continue to defer it, uh, so long as all the proper procedures are applied. Now, at some point, uh, the applicant may become, uh, you know, concerned if, if it's simply without their request, but I'm not concerned at this point.
Any other questions for staff? No?
Alice, will this site plan anticipate addressing, uh, existing stream buffer situation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other question? Julie?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Alice, can you just confirm, is this the third, then, deferral?
Uh.
Or maybe a better set, can we verify how many deferrals we've had at this point, including this request for a deferral?
I think this would be the fourth, if, if deferred.
So, this is the fourth deferral?
8/27th, May 18th, June 15th.
This would be the fourth.
I, I have asked, um, this council and our staff in the past, when we've gotten into a situation where we have continual deferrals, to consider what we might want to do so that we're not, um, wasting taxpayer dollars and wasting the time of our staff and of this body. Um, I, I do think at some point, we need to have some parameters that if we don't get the data that we need, that perhaps we need to move along. Um, again, we, this is not the first time that we've been asking this information, so knowing that this is the fourth deferral, I would just ask that if indeed we defer it this evening, that we give careful consideration to whether or not we would ever defer it yet again, and if so, that we would have evidence as to why we've had to continue to defer, given the amount of time that's transpired.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I have one. I guess my question is, what's taking so long?
Well, basically, this is a person who, it's not familiar with the process. And we have asked for a, a, a survey and site plan with some clarity that he has been unable to provide to us. And the site plan that was submitted, um, since the, the June 15th did not meet staff's expectation. It did not address the concerns that we have showing the exact location of the buildings and the buffer. And so, we have provided the applicant with a list of surveyors that he can pick and choose from, and said, this is, these are some folks you might need to talk to to bring us back a, a site plan in which we can, uh, make a, a good recommendation.
So, it's not what we're doing, or?
No, no, it's not.
Anything we need to get from, uh, another municipality or anything?
No, it's not.
It's all the applicant?
It's all the applicant.
Mr. Bram, I ask a question of Ms. Wakefield.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wakefield, do, do we anticipate that by the time this comes around again, that this individual will likely have this, this information to your satisfaction?
We do.
That's all I need.
All right. Okay. Do we have, uh, public hearing on this? Do we have anyone here to speak on this? Do we have an applicant here?
I have no one speaking in support or opposition on this item.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing then. Is there any more council discussion? Okay. Not, do I have a motion seconded?
I'd like to make a motion to defer Agenda Item Number 09813 until our September 21st meeting.
Yes.
Seconded.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, seconded by Councilmember Tard. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Our next item is U 09-02/VCO 9-02 at 151 Birmingham Highway. Applicant is Rob Nestor to obtain a use permit for a landscaping business on 3.926 acres at a density of 3,87.92 square feet per acre, Article 19.4.27. Uh, the applicant is also requesting concurrent variances to allow access from a local street, Article 19.4.27B1, Agenda Item Number 09836. First presentation on April 13th. This was deferred on June 15th, 2009. Ms. Alice Wakefield?
Okay. This is, uh, also, an applicant is requesting a use permit for a landscaping business, and I'm happy to say that this applicant provided staff with everything that we need. Um, this applicant, uh, has been before this body several times, and mainly because of the need for concurrent variances, so therefore it had to go back to the, uh, to the Planning Commission. The recommendation of the Planning Commission is approval of the use permit, approval of parts one through three of the concurrent variance, and that is the recommendation of staff, with exception of staff's recommendation, is for denial of parts two and three. And now, I'll turn it over to Ms. McDonald.
Just wanted to go over some items since the last time that this was before you. Basically, we, as Alice said, we went back, um, to include some concurrent variances as well as for the applicant to complete a, um, updated survey, which, this was the original survey that was based on a, one about fifteen years ago, and, okay, the new one's not in there. But there is a new one in your packet, um, that was just conducted. And, um, let me just go through the, uh, staff report and report to you our findings. Um, first, I want to just go through the site plan analysis, Part One of the concurrent variance to allow access from Taylor Road to local street. Due to site distance, volume, speeds, and safety concerns, the Taylor Road driveway is the recommended entrance exit rather than the Birmingham Highway driveway for this landscape business. And attached to the report is, um, the Public Works Report on this issue. Public Works recommends the use of the driveway on Taylor Road and recommends that the owner provide a line of sight easement and removal of vegetation and fencing that may encroach in the line of sight. Since the time of this writing, um, staff, Public Works, as well as Mark Law, the arborists, and myself have gone out to the site and determined that that area of line of sight, that there is no specimen-sized trees, and that basically, um, ten feet with, inside of the right-of-way should be cleared. So, we have that all taken care of as far as what needs to be done, and it won't affect any, any specimen trees. Based on the fact that the access is not considered safe, a small number of trips per day, and the applicant, applicant's agreement to having all trips related to the business use the Taylor Road entrance, staff recommends approval conditional of Part One, VCO 902. Just going on to the landscape strips and buffers. Article 12H 31, Section A1 states that all properties shall provide a minimum ten-foot landscape strip along all public street. It appears that the applicant meets this requirement. Furthermore, Article 12H 31, Section C1 of the Northwest Overlay District requires a fifty-foot wide undisturbed buffer and ten-foot improvement setback, which shall be located adjacent to all AG1 zoning districts and all properties owned to use or develop for residential uses. Um, Part Two of the concurrent variance is a request to allow the existing structures' gravel drive and septic system to encroach into the fifty-foot undisturbed buffer and ten-foot improvement setback along the south property line as shown. Um, Part Two of the concurrent variance was added on April 28th, 2009. The applicant submitted a new survey in May 26th to the Community Development Department. The survey indicated that the building used as storage adjacent to the parking and the septic field is outside of the fifty-foot undisturbed buffer and ten-foot improvement setback. At the time, the applicant thought that that was going to be inside the buffer, so once the new survey was done, it showed that it was outside of it. Therefore, variance is not needed for the main storage building and septic tank, as well as the septic tank. And the septic tank is the cross-hatched area, um, on, if you look at your site plan in your packet, this is not the correct site plan. I don't have a blow-up of it right here, but, um, I know the Planning Commission was trying to figure out what everything was. But basically, the septic tank in the main building is not in the fifty-foot se-, buffer or ten-foot improvement setback, but, um, the small shed greenhouse is located, it's bisected by about five feet on either side. It straddles that fifty-foot, um, setback. So, um, although this encroachment does not appear to have a negative impact on the adjacent property to the south, that is, the, um, the greenhouse shed, um, based on the revised variance considerations approved by the Mayor and City Council on January 21st, 2009, this request does not meet all the variance considerations to support this reduction in the buffer and improvement setback. Staff knows that it appears the structure could also be relocated outside the fifty-foot undisturbed buffer and ten-foot improvement setback. Therefore, staff recommends denial of Part Two, VCO 902, to allow the shed greenhouse to encroach. If the Mayor and City Council chooses to approve this part of the concurrent variance, a condition to allow could be included in the recommendations. Um, this is the portion that the Planning Commission recommended to approve based on further discussion with the applicant, that the shed, not the shed, but the greenhouse is a custom greenhouse made of glass. It is not your plastic over a frame type of greenhouse. Um, also, the applicant has a letter indicating from the adjacent property owner that most affects, um, support for that greenhouse to encroach at approximately five feet. The building, in regards to building setbacks, um, the zoning ordinance requires a minimum front yard of sixty feet along Birmingham Highway and Taylor Road. A minimum side yard of twenty-five feet is required along the south property line. Staff notes that triangle lots do not have a rear yard. The new survey indicates that the existing home encroaches into the side building setback. It is considered a grandfather non-conforming structure since it was built in 1951 prior to the adoption of the Fulton County zoning resolution. Um, Article 12H of the Northwest Overlay District requires a maximum thirty-feet building setback from the edge of the required landscape strip and/or easements for all properties and lots located adjacent to public rights of way and from zero to four hundred feet from an intersection. In staff's opinion, it appears that the applicant has met this requirement for existing structures. Article 19 of the zoning ordinance use permit standards requires all use area structures other than parking and pedestrian walkways shall be located at least fifty feet from any adjoining residential district or AG1. And Part Three of VCO 902 is, um, to allow the existing structures along the south property line as shown on the site plan to remain within the fifty-foot setback adjoining AG1. Again, this variance was added on April 28th, um, and once the, uh, new survey was submitted, it indicated the building used as storage, um, is outside of the fifty-foot setback adjoining AG1. Therefore, variance is not needed for the main storage building. Um, since the home and associated driveway that derives its access from Birmingham Highway are not utilized by the landscape business, they can remain in the fifty-foot setback adjoining AG1. Staff notes that the house shall not be used as an office for the business but remain a residential use which will be reflected in the recommended conditions. The small shed greenhouse is encroaching in the fifty-foot building setback adjacent to AG1 by less than five feet. Although this encroachment does not appear to have a negative impact on the adjacent property to the south, based on the revised variance considerations approved by the Mayor and City Council on January 21st, this request does not meet all the four variance considerations to support this reduction in the setback. Staff notes that it would be difficult to relocate the custom glass greenhouse but could be removed completely. Therefore, staff recommends denial of Part Three, VCO 902, to allow the shed greenhouse to encroach into the fifty-foot setback. If the Mayor and City Council chooses to approve this part of the concurrent variance, a condition to allow it could be included in the recommended conditions. And again, this was the second part that the Planning Commission supported approval of this, um, Part Three of the variance. Um, based on the, um, observations that staff has made, that it doesn't appear to, um, have an impact, and this business has been existing for approximately fifteen years. Screening and, and fencing, an opaque fence gate is located along Taylor Road. The fences permitted pursuant to Article 12H 32A, which allows opaque fences for loading areas. Design Review Board recommended additional plantings along this area, but the Public Works Department required the applicant to clear the vegetation along fence and to relocate the fence along Taylor Road. After the Transportation Engineer, City Arborist, and Planner visited the site, it was determined that it appears that a portion of the fence furthest from the gate could be removed, and additional plantings would provide the necessary screening of the landscape business from the road. Staff notes that there are no specimen-sized trees in this area. So, basically, what could happen is you have the, the ten-foot right-of-way, well, the, the right-of-way, and then within ten feet, there's be a clear zone. But Mark Law has said that there can be additional plantings past the ten-foot clear zone to help in the wintertime, because there's a lot of, um, in the wintertime, there could be some more, it's just, it could show some things, but it's still very heavily wooded. So, he would recommend some, um, evergreen-type plantings to be supplemented along that area. Um, the site plan meets all the parking requirements. Um, again, the arborist, um, in his statement says that the applicant has no plans to remove any trees on the subject site as far as, uh, specimen size. Overall, the site is heavily vegetated with small caliper hardwoods and pines. Where the plantings are sparse, additional plantings will be required to meet the buffer standards. There are two specimen trees on the southeast portion of the site, one twenty-eight-inch oak and one thirty-seven-inch oak. They are both in healthy condition and will not be affected by the project. And basically, um, the use overall is consistent with the land use or economic development plans adopted by the Mayor and City Council, um, and it is consistent with encouraging development, consistent with the surrounding scale, transition of densities, and uses and comprehensive plan policies where appropriate. It's compatible, um, if developed with the staff's recommended conditions and the provisions of zoning ordinance, it's consistent, um, compatible, or it's compatible with land uses and zoning districts in the vicinity. Um, staff notes that on August 17th, 2007, Milton City Council approved a use permit for landscaping business at 15386 Birmingham Highway pursuant to UO 701. The effect of the proposed use on traffic flow, vehicular, and pedestrian along adjoining streets, the proposed use will not generate a significant increase in traffic. In addition, the applicant has agreed to limit the number of deliveries to the site to two per week. This is also indicated or shown in the, uh, recommended conditions. The Public Works staff recommends that only one interest be utilized at Taylor Road based on site distance, volume, speeds, and safety concerns along Birmingham Highway. If Part Two of VCO 902 is approved, it is staff's opinion that the amount of protective screening will provide adequate screening for the business. Staff notes that the property is heavily planted along all property lines. Hours of operations range from seven to nine AM and seven to nine to six, six-thirty PM, depending on the season. This business has six to eight employees. The applicant states that this location is merely a holding place for plants, materials, and two trucks used for jobs. That there will, uh, regarding street scape lighting, um, it appears that the site is in compliance with 12H 34, the Northwest Fulton Overlay District regarding outdoor lighting. Staff notes that subject site's required buffers and existing screening will help mitigate the impact of any possible lights on the adjacent property. Staff notes that the applicant does not have any plans for additional lighting on the property. Ingress and egress to the property, um, the site plan indicates one curb cut on Birmingham and one curb cut, curb cut on Taylor. If the concurrent variance is granted, staff recommends that the landscape business vehicles only access the site through Taylor Road entrance. This will be reflected in the recommended conditions. Um, again, this went before the Design Review Board on March 3rd. They had stated replacing wooden privacy fence with four-board horse fence and gate, screened fence with a mix of evergreens, no additional curb cuts along Birmingham Highway, no expansion of current use, no additional clearing. Business should not be open to the public and no signage. The applicant has met the requirements of the public participation plan. I just want to go over, um, the Planning Commission meeting on June 23rd and their Um, one of them were, "All materials stored on the site shall be placed in three-sided bins not to exceed more than three hundred feet. Replace existing opaque privacy fence along Taylor Road after the required clearing of plant materials as required by the Public Works Department for site distance. Limit the site to one dumpster, there's already just one dumpster on the site. Limit the number of deliveries to the site to two per week, uh, not to exceed four landscape vehicles on the site, aside from the personal vehicles when they come, just four landscape vehicles. The greenhouse and potting shed may encroach into the fifty-foot undisturbed buffer and ten-foot improvement setback. The greenhouse and potting shed may encroach into the fifty-foot setback adjoining the AG1 district." In conclusion, staff finds that the proposed landscape business does not have a negative impact on the surrounding uses and may be compatible with surrounding uses if developed with the attached conditions. Staff is, is in support of Part One of the concurrent variance to allow access to a local street, Taylor Road, due to safety and the high volume of traffic on Birmingham Highway. Although staff recommends denial of parts two and three based on not being able to satisfy all four variance considerations, staff is in opinion that the existing structures do not have a negative impact on the adjacent property. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of UO 902 and approval conditional of U902, Part One, and denial of parts two and three. So... So, in conclusion, that is staff's recommendations.
Do you have any questions from council to our staff?
I just have one question there. The information that was before the planning commission for them to make their decision.
Correct.
Has any of that information changed?
Not since the twenty-third of June, no.
So they had all these exact same information?
Right. I mean, as far as those site visit, I believe the site visit, oh, I think it, I can't remember if it happened before or after, but we were just finalizing. I think it happened after the planning commission because we wanted to finalize exactly how we were going to handle the site distance as far as what needed to be removed and not removed.
But there'd been, I mean, the survey and everything else.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're all dealing with the site set of facts.
Exactly the same.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from staff?
I have a couple of questions.
Alan?
The first one, I don't know where this needs to go, to Mr. Gerard or Ms. McDonald, but the staff's report mentioned three-part variance.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm cognizant of the fact that our agenda only mentions the, the one part of the variance that has to do with access to a local road.
They've all been advertised. As far as sending the notices and the sign has the correct advertising.
But it's not on our agenda.
Mr. Gerard, you agree with this?
So the issue is that, that the agenda identifies only one of the variances, but the others have been advertised?
Correct.
Give me just a minute, Mr. Gerard. I guess I'm just wondering, out of an abundance of transparency, why we didn't put all those, all the variance requests on the agenda itself? That's just what I'm wondering. The other thing is, can staff speak to the location of the proposed elementary school in conjunction with that local road entrance? Because we've, we've had a lot of concern from residents that live in that Taylor Glen subdivision about the proposed elementary school and potentially kids walking to and from school and there being a, a business entrance right there.
I can, I can address that if you want me to. The elementary school is located even off this map. It's below, if, where Wood Road comes into Birmingham, it's just above Wood, Wood Road. And so, I, there's no sidewalks, there's no, I don't think people would be sending their kids to walk from Taylor Glen, and Taylor Glen's off of this map. It's not even on this map. They'd have to go all the way up Taylor and all the way back down, and the elementary school's further down to the south.
And then as far as school buses or, or school stops, we don't even know about those yet.
No.
Okay. I think, let me see if there was another question. I want to go back to Mr. Gerard. I know that you had mentioned in, in part D, as far as the number of deliveries that will be made per week.
Correct.
And this might be a question for the applicant. I may, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but I'll, I'll ask the applicant. Do we know the number of vehicles that will be coming in and out of that exit? Not just deliveries. I'm talking about personal vehicles, deliveries coming to and from, the landscaping business, exiting the landscaping business. What, what kind of traffic are we going to have going in and out of that exit?
I think the applicant can answer that more thoroughly.
All right.
If I can jump in and, and let you look at the, if you flip to where the Public Works Department made their recommendation, which is after the, after the package, you'll show the, they show the driveway data as AM with eight in, two, eight in, two out, and it in reverse in the afternoon.
Okay. I, I see that now. It's just not, that's not even, that consideration isn't made in the conditions from staff. Deliveries are made, and there's a condition regarding the number of vehicles that should be on site. But as far as intensity of use and the fact that this special use, special use permit could transfer to someone else, there's no consideration, I don't even know if we can make a consideration for the amount of vehicular traffic, period, that will come in and out of that local entrance. I'll just defer to everyone else on that. Can we have an answer on the?
Yeah. Ken, you want?
Yeah. Counselor member. Well, no, I mean, I've, I mean, the, the facts are fairly clear. I mean, and, and the, the answer is, is that if it was advertised, as far as what I mean by advertised, if it was a legal ad in the paper.
Yeah, I've got both the legal notice and the, yes.
And there was also a, was there a posting on the property?
Yes, it was on both frontages.
It's, it's not optimal to have not identified all of the variances in the actual agenda publication, but I don't think that would render it fatal to this action being taken by this council being informed, so long as you have a lawful and legitimate public notice as well as a signage on the property. I, I think the agenda, again, it's not optimal, but I think you could go forward tonight. If the council wanted to defer to publish another agenda to make sure that it was on there, that would be okay too. But I do believe if the council took action tonight, it would not be void or inform action based upon the agenda not being exactly precise. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Ken, I believe you have a couple of questions.
Robin, staff made note that there, there was an approval of the landscape business on Birmingham Highway. Is that entrance that we approved on Birmingham Highway for that?
It was.
How many vehicles were?
It was, again, a very small, I, it's, it was an office, and I don't even know if they do very many. I don't, I don't think that he really stored a lot on his property, so it was more for an office.
Yeah, that's what I recall that. I just wanted to point that out because that's not.
And the site distance would have been different and vertical, I mean, it's just a different part of Birmingham Highway. It's still not great, but it's, I think it was a better site distance, this property, than this property.
Right. We've had a lot of concern. I know that staff puts into the report that there wasn't much public comment with regard to this.
Right. There was, last week, a gentleman came in, an adjacent property owner, and he just had some questions, but once he was, I, there was a property owner, not, not this one, but this one. He's a developer, and he was just, had some questions, and I clarified what the variances were, and he was not in opposition after it was clarified what was going on.
So staff has not received any comments other than the comments from the community that was here at the original meeting?
Correct.
Which were from the families that live off of Taylor Road?
Correct.
Noting that, you know, this was going to be a, a challenge for them because of the kids and the school buses, they felt, getting on to go to the new elementary school.
Right. And I, as I said, I mean, Taylor Glen's not even on this location. It's further to the south down Taylor. It's, it's even off this map.
That's it?
Yeah.
Well.
I'm not even sure if that's, that might be it, but it's fairly, it's not adjacent to it at all.
Just clarify for one second.
And I just wanted to say, the Planning Commission, they did a thorough job of really looking at all the issues, and I think the reasoning, too, for them wanting to approve the variances was that they felt like if this was a new, a new proposed business, that they wouldn't have voted the way they did, but based on the fact that everything was existing and it's been there for fifteen years, they felt that it was a hardship in their eyes to allow the variance, those particular parts of the variances to be approved, but...
Well, I think that, that the reason that we're, the variances are coming with forces because it's been operating, but not with a proper license.
Correct.
But my concern is because staff doesn't seem to have gotten the same information that we as a council, I believe a lot of us have gotten information from the community just as their concern, so I wanted to point that out. I mean, there has been a lot of emails and other information.
I haven't received.
I'm glad you're receiving that too.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have other questions?
I guess I'm a little confused about our process this evening. I'm typically accustomed to having the applicant provide us a presentation as opposed to just a summary from our staff, so I'm not sure where we are in the process.
These are questions, this is questions to staff.
Right. I, I feel like we're already in the applicant's kind of presentation, so I would ask, just as a point of order, to clarify.
We have, we have.
I'll clarify. Right now, we're questions for staff and then the applicant and, you know, just.
Thank you. As a, as a point of order. Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to go back to the first question that was raised, which really is about legality. I wrote down when you said, City Attorney, that it's not fatal, that we don't have a proper agenda. I would hope that this body doesn't have to have something that's fatal before we make good decisions that represent public transparency. I recall when we were here before and our staff had not appropriately identified all three variances. The reason it was deferred at that point was that the agenda only identified one of the variances, and I believe that much of our public sometimes goes to our website in order to identify what the items in fact are, and I believe that we in fact promote our website as a mechanism, as a really strong positive mechanism for public information. And if, if what is being told to us this evening is that in fact we don't have a consistent amount of advertising between the agenda and what was perhaps publicized on site, I'll combine that with the fact that we also heard in this chamber from citizens before that said that the signage was not appropriately posted historically, because I think of the color of the sign and how it was posted, if you combine those two things, I, I would just ask us, and with caution and with public transparency, always, hopefully, being at the forefront of how we make decisions, that if we're willing to defer another case because the applicant hasn't provided information, that it would be in the best interest of all citizens and their interest if we took caution and simply gave the appropriate amount of time for our staff to appropriately reflect the variances on our agenda. And, and to me, that's just something that we need to decide before we even get into this case, and I realize it's now been publicly advertised, but it has not been publicly advertised correctly. So I'll just speak for this one, council member. I would not be comfortable proceeding and making a decision this evening knowing that it may not be fatal, but the fact that we're going to use fatality as a decision about making good decisions as this body, I couldn't possibly continue to make a decision on a case that's not been properly advertised.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to, if there's no other questions for staff, we'll move into the, I'll let the applicant make their presentation, and then we'll have time for comments after.
Mayor, I just have one quick question. It's, I just checked our city website, and when I clicked on the agenda, it brought up all the variances listed just like we have. I assume that was, has been posted for a few days.
That's correct. It's posted on, on our website. There is a difference, though, as stated, between the actual wording of the item on the agenda, but the...
But if they clicked on that item on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
They would get all the detail with all the variances and everything else, just like?
Yes, ma'am. The whole staff report is attached.
Okay. So, so anyone who really was interested would have all that, have had all that information?
Yes, ma'am. The, it was available.
Thank you.
So the agenda that, that's on the website is correct, the agenda that we have and the agenda that's being distributed now is not?
No, sir.
You know what? And I'd like to move forward.
Okay.
Presentation. We can have comments after, after the presentation.
We'll give our staff time to clarify that, if you guys want to check on that. Take a look. Thank you.
Hi. Rob Nester, fifteen fifteen zero, Birmingham Highway, American Gardens. I'm confused about a few things. The sign was given to me by the city, so as far as the color, I had nothing to do with it. The signs were posted where I, they were told to be posted. Everything was advertised. The new issues that have come up since the last two meetings were brought up by your attorney, and like Robin said, after the site plan came through, those weren't even necessary because the building, the structure was within the fifty-foot buffer. So I'm, I don't understand the big concern or discussion. And as far as the school, I work in a lot of subdivisions around there, and I got to tell you, every parent picks their kid up either at the school or at the entrance of their neighborhood. If you've been to my site and on Birmingham Highway, as a parent, if you let your child walk from that school to your house, you're taking your child's life because you do not want them walking on Birmingham Highway.
Okay. At this point, do we have public comment either for?
That completes public, public comment. In support, I do have one in opposition.
Okay. We can hear from that.
Ms. Diane Maloney?
Mayor, Council, Diane Maloney, one four four three oh, Wood Road. This has been an interesting evening. I am in opposition, but I just want to bring up a couple of points. The biggest thing is I'm worried about a precedent that might be set. If, if we're going to allow this, it, it, you, you can have businesses on, in any residential area, and it's a can of worms I don't think we want to open. But the other thing is I want to reach out because we live in Milton, and I feel like, you know, we need to be good neighbors to each other, and I don't want to come up and just oppose something and not offer a solution, so I don't know if any of this is possible, but just trying to find a solution, I, I don't know if it's possible if, because I think the big thing is the trucks going in and out of the business. I don't know if the city has any property where maybe he could store his trucks. I know, you know, that may be sort of a far-fetched thing, but I, I think we need to try to work together to solve this. And the other thing is, I guess maybe I just don't understand this whole special use permit thing, and if that stays with the property, the big thing is, you know, he's, only has a few trucks now, and yeah, they may not make a lot of trips, but if that special use permit stays with that property, I mean, his business may grow, he may sell it, and we don't know what's going to happen in the future, and we really need to be aware of that and think about what mu, what might happen in the future. So it's really the precedent that I'm concerned about. The other thing is, you know, you know, the, the whole site thing on Birmingham, it's just really unfortunate that he can't have his entrance on Birmingham because I think that would solve a lot of the, you know, the safety concerns, but I, I just, I'm very concerned about the precedent that would be set. And I'm, but on the other hand, I'm really, I understand you've been there for fifteen years, and like I said, I just wish that there was some way that we could work all this out together because we are neighbors, but as a citizen, I look to my counsel to, to really do what's right in the best interest of everybody and especially long term, but I, I don't know. Maybe if somebody could let him park the truck somewhere, even on city property, and maybe he could do some landscaping for the city at low cost or something, but I don't know. I, I just wish we could work something out, but on the other hand, that whole legal precedent issue is, is very scary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
That completes public comment. Both, both parties have time if they would like to speak.
Well, we have a good time.
Yeah. I can appreciate her comments. As far as trucks, you know the, the routine what I have and don't have. There's less trucks coming out of my business than there are on Birmingham Highway on both ends of the property, and, and semis also. So I don't think really the trucks are the big issue. There was something else that came up, I'm trying to remember. I wish I could, but...
I have my talking card. Can I just, just say one thing real quick? Because I think his thought is...
I think it's a point of order if, identify yourself.
Okay. My name is Bill Reynolds, and I'm at one one seven seven oh, Haynesbridge Road, Suite two oh five. I work with American Gardens, but the, I just, I think that some people don't understand, and I appreciate her comments as well, but we're, we're already putting conditions on the property or agreeing to put conditions on the property to help with the situation for future owners of the property. For example, limiting deliveries to two times a week. Originally, the planning and zoning said, or the, whatever the last meeting was, we've been to so many, said two deliveries a day, and we said, you know, we don't even need that many. We said just two a week is, is enough for us.
Which we don't even have.
And we, because we get deliveries to the job sites, and, and so, and we're also, part of the condition is not to grow the business anymore. I don't think there are many people, including yourselves, who are saying we're not going to grow our business, you know? So we're agreeing to do that, and also, as far as precedent, the precedent's already been set. I think if what the city wants to do is for future owners of the property, for example, I think if what the city wants to do is for future businesses to say that there can be no, if it's, if they're trying to gear, which it looks like, towards landscape businesses in particular, that if you want to say no more landscape businesses and agricultural areas and only commercial areas, then, you know, create that. But right now, the precedent has already been set. And we've been conducting business for 15 years on, as good neighbors, so...
And to follow up what he was getting at, is we worked with the, with planning and zoning in the last meeting to address the future use of the property since the land use would stay with the property. And we let them know how limited we, what we, we were requiring. And they were, like he said, offering more to us. And we said, no, we don't need that. You could, you could limit those things so later on down the road, 20 years, if I sold it, what have you, it would still have to maintain as a small, small business. So we were trying to work with the city since we've been there, and we can appreciate the city's concerns and the neighbors' concerns because that's why we've landscaped it the way we have. That's why we haven't put a sign up because we're all concerned about aesthetics and traffic. And, you know, I think if we limit some of the subdivisions, that might help traffic too.
Is there any other public comment?
Ms. Maloney, you still have time if you want to make any additional comments at this time. Ms. Maloney?
All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And before I open back up to council discussion, ask Mr. City Attorney, is there any different thoughts on your, your first recap of the agenda?
Of whether we can go forward this evening? Again, noth, nothing different. I mean, I, it's, it's, as Councilmember Honor Bailey said, I stand by my original recommendations. It's not fatal. It would appear, and again, I don't know the history as well as you may know it with respect to this, the satisfactory nature of the ads posted on the property, but I am assuming that everything else was done appropriately. And if that's the case, then I think all three items are fair, fair game. The, the purpose of the agenda is to put your citizenry on reasonable notice of the subject matter of what will be discussed this evening. And that coupled with the legal ads and that coupled with the signage satisfy me. Now, is it optimal? No, it's not optimal. You want your agenda to accurately identify everything that will be discussed. But I'm looking at it from the standpoint of defensibility, and I could defend it.
Thank you. All right. Now I'll open up for council discussion. Any discussion here?
I have a question.
Alan?
Just for the applicant. I guess I'm wondering why, and I want, I want you all to know that I'm going to make my decision as if you were a new business coming before us to ask for a special use permit. But I, I would like to know why it is until now that you've asked for the special use permit. Why did you need to be cited before you did that?
Because I didn't even know I needed this land use permit. I've been there 15 years. I've dealt with Fulton County. I've had business license with them. No one has ever told me this is what I needed to have. If I did, I would have applied for it a long time ago when the neighborhoods weren't around, and it would have been a lot smoother, trust me. So it's real frustrating to me. And the other thing is what's amazing to me, I think there's a little, I mean, if, if we're getting upset because the other landscape company wants another deferral, why would you want to defer me again when I've been through nine meetings already and I presented everything on schedule in detail? So why would we want to continue this? And I, I wish you would consider the fact that I've been there 15 years and that I haven't had any issues with the city, with the neighbors, with nothing. I mean, I could have put a sign up years ago. I could be asking for a sign. I could have cleared trees. I could have done all kinds of things. But the proof's in the pudding. You see my structures. You see what I have. You see how I've been operating. My track record speaks for itself. So I wish you would consider the 15 years. I think it's only fair.
Well, I think from my perspective, and this isn't necessarily to you, but it's to council as well, what I, what I have a problem with, and I will consider this based on as if you were a new business coming before us for a special use permit. I guess the problem I'm having is this discussion of the fact that it's a hardship that you need to have this entrance and exit onto Taylor Road, and there's safety issues with Birmingham Road, et cetera. Because I understand that not every piece of property in Milton is designed or intended for every single use that we can throw at it. And just because you have been operating this business for, you know, a long time illegally, doesn't necessarily give you some sort of special consideration because you've been doing it that way for years.
Okay. But I'd like to address that because first of all, to me, I haven't been operating it illegally. When I dealt with Fulton County and I've done what they've required, I've paid my taxes to the city of Alpharetta, which was the city then, not Milton. I don't see where I've been operating illegally as far as I see it. The other thing, I did come out of Birmingham Highway when I opened that business 15 years ago. The city grew and grew and grew and grew, and I had access to Taylor Road, and that's why I went to Taylor Road. If you went to my site and you saw how the State Department designed that road and laid it out, it is safer to go on Taylor Road. I'll be glad to, if you decide for me to come out on Birmingham Highway, I'll do it. I'm just saying...
Yeah, I've actually been to the site. And I also know that our standards have been designed to ensure public health, safety, and welfare of all of the residents in Milton, not just your business or businesses that are around you. And in terms of precedent, what I'm looking for is that you have a hardship that prevents you from operating, as if you were a new business, you would come to us and say, you know, "City Council, I would like to operate a landscaping business. I want to use this piece of land, but in order to do that, I'm going to have to enter upon this local road." And our ordinance clearly says that because of the health, safety, and welfare of all of the citizens of Milton, you cannot, you, you cannot have a entrance onto a local road and have a special use permit for landscaping businesses. It's not that we don't like landscaping businesses or anything like that. It is specified in our ordinance that that is a requirement. There's a reason for that. So if I'm looking at that variance request if you're a new business, my answer would be, you know, you don't have a hardship. Maybe that's not the, the piece of land that you need to be using to operate that landscaping business because there could be safety issues. One of the questions that, that I ask staff leading up to this meeting is, is there a way for you, and in the interest of, of trying to figure out a solution, is there a way for you to operate sa, safely and use Birmingham Road as, or Birmingham Highway as an entrance? And, or exit? And the answer that was given by staff, and I don't know whether staff wants to speak there or not, is there could be ways, but yes, you would have to go get GDOT approval if, if they would even give you that. And you would have to, you would have to come across with some money to make that road safe for you to exit and enter. Now, that would allow you to meet our standards, and it would allow you to operate the business legally within our standards, and it would not set a negative precedent going forward for any other landscaping business in the city of Milton that wants to enter into a local road. And the answer they gave was, yeah, you could, you could do that, but yeah, you would have to go get other approvals, and you could potentially have to come out of pocket some expense to make that safe. And I was wondering whether city staff could speak to that opportunity?
Well, that opportunity does exist. If, if the access to Taylor Road were, were denied, the, the primary access onto Birmingham would have to be improved to commercial standards. And so you'd be looking at approval from GDOT, and whether they would require that to be a right-in, right-out only, or installation of a left-turn lane into the facility would be subject to their judgment. And so there would be costs associated with both construction and engineering to obtain that permit.
Because your, your report says that the turning off, let's see, the site distance to the left meets the requirements, but it's the right that does not.
That's correct.
So what would potentially, what could be done at that intersec, at the intersection to make that safe?
Well, again, one alternative would be a right-in, right-out configuration where you can't make a left into, into the facility from Birmingham Highway, and you can't make a left out of the facility. So you're only making that right turn movement in and out of the facility. The other alternative could be the installation of a left-turn lane, which would provide you some refuge, making an exit, going, turning left on Birmingham Highway, and would, would allow vehicles turning left into the site to move out of the through lane.
So if they turned right out of the, out of the landscaping business, and they could not turn left into it off of Birmingham Highway, it was always, you know, you got to, you got to take a right, then they would meet the safety standards as it is now with GDOT approval?
It could.
Okay. Without having to get a variance that could potentially set a precedent going forward for any other landscaping business?
It's all subject to GDOT's review and approval.
Right.
Okay. All right. Move on down to, any questions from council? Just Tina, do you have anything?
Potentially. My, my concern, quite frankly, is I, I do want to support you as a business. I want to support you being able to continue as a business in Milton. My concern is that Taylor Road entrance. And I'm, I'm really even more concerned because I think our staff should have recommended that you have your entrance on Birmingham Highway, as you said you've had in the past. And it sounds like it's not as difficult as maybe we once thought, as Councilmember Tarte has very well articulated. You know, I know that GDOT has a, has an approval timeframe for these kinds of things, but, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm very concerned about, about that whole entrance from, from Taylor Road. And we don't have the folks here tonight, but that's because we deferred. And I, and I'm not sure that we deferred based on the council's needs to defer. We deferred this when we did have the public here from that area, you know, with their concerns about it being on a, on a local road. My concern has always been that it be on a local road. And again, not just for Taylor Road, but because it may set a precedent that other local roads, other landscape businesses, and we have a lot of them in Milton, we support landscape businesses obviously in Milton, may choose, and our staff may choose to ask if they have an entrance and an exit from a local road. So I like the line of discussion here, especially the applicant is, is open to this.
Well, I'm open, but I'm also very cautious because, you know, you get more state and city people involved and more costs, and I just can't afford that.
And I understand that. I, I, you know, I don't know who...
I mean, I've already spent so much money now and time and...
And, and again, I, you know, I'm just, I'm asked to make decisions for the totality of our citizenry. And honestly, you know, my...
And don't, I mean...
And then I know you're concerned too. I mean, it's, we're trying to make this work, and I think Ms. Maloney articulated it very well too. I mean, we want to try to make this work if we can. It's put us all kind of in a precarious decision-making position because it's not, you know, the option...
But I guess, I mean, I'm confused because down the street where there are retail businesses and having semis pull off Birmingham Highway, causing traffic tie-ups and slow-ups and having to cross the main highway there, and there I am, just two little landscape trucks pulling out, taking a right turn, always pretty much a right turn. In the 12 years I've been on Taylor Road, I've, I don't think I've ever taken a left turn.
And that's my point. From Birmingham Highway, you know, that's why I asked about the other landscaping business too earlier with our staff. It does not seem to me like that is such a challenging situation to ensure that this entrance of this business is from a highway that's adjacent to as opposed to a local road. That's all I'm saying. So I, I don't have any further questions.
I, I can understand everybody's comments about Birmingham Highway entrance. I, I'm personally not so sure that that would be, even, even with a D cell lane or right-in, right-out, would be a safer entrance and exit. I think something that we're perhaps missing is that going off Taylor Road, we're able to get some pretty good restrictions in here as to limiting deliveries, this, that, and the other. Maybe missing the forest for the trees. Be able, able to restrict this by coming off a local road versus having a little bit less rain over it coming off of Birmingham, if that was even able to be done.
I think that's a good point.
My comments as I go down, and unlike Councilmember Tarte, I'm looking at this not from as this was a new, was, is a new business, whereas I would certainly look at it differently and make sure it meets our ordinance as, but more as a 12- or 15-year property owner, good neighbor, taxpayer, just trying to operate, operate your business. Maybe I have more experience personally than, than some people here dealing with GDOT. No offense to GDOT or whatever, but I don't know that I would ask my worst enemy to get involved with that and everything you'd have to go and the expense. It might be easier just to tell you to put a helicopter pad in there and deliver your materials. So, but anyways, that's my position on it. Bill?
Three different things here. Kind of somewhat confused by Councilmember from District 6 here in his mention of hardship. I didn't read anything in the report here that addresses a hardship, but be that as it may. I refer to the report and recommendation by our own Public Works Department, and in particular, to the analysis of a Birmingham Highway entrance and exit. And the last statement in the Birmingham Highway analysis reads, "The site distance to the right or south on Birmingham Highway is limited by the vertical line of sight and the grade of the roadway." We talk about health and public safety and welfare here. GDOT and Public Works and anyone who's in highway design is concerned about site distances here. And if the site distance to the south on Birmingham Highway does not conform to design standards, I certainly wouldn't want to recommend that we do something contrary to GDOT and, and county design standards. I can understand residents on Taylor Road, they don't want a, a driveway, a commercial driveway coming off of Taylor Road from the site. However, when Public Works recommends the use of a driveway on Taylor Road based on good engineering, sound, traffic engineering principles, I find it difficult to recommend against Public Works's recommendation.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to just verify that the comment earlier about the deferral ties to the fact that the public process, at least from my perspective, always needs to be the most transparent. And the fact that tonight it came to our, it was made, we were made aware of the fact that the agenda was not appropriately publicized. That's not an applicant issue. That's an issue for our staff and for us to be able to assess legally. And I always will err on the side of caution when it comes to public notification. Secondly, I'd like to address the point with the question about the sign. The last time that we were here and when we had some citizens that mentioned their concern with not having seen signs that were posted, again, it's not that the applicant didn't post the appropriate signs, it's that we had citizens before us that asked that those signs be modified so that they would be more readily readable. Because I think many people felt that they were not and that they continued to not be as readable, whether those be this application or others. So those are two separate issues that from my perspective still deserve attention. To the case at hand, I remain concerned that we have an agenda that's inconsistent with what was publicized. We don't know what's on the website, what wasn't, when it was actually posted, when it was not. And again, I will always err on the side of, of having the most transparency possible. To the point that I just heard about hardship, I would agree that the analysis of our staff doesn't speak to hardship and nor did the Planning Commission. When I listened to the web streaming of that site, there is not a hardship on this site. And in the past, hardship has typically been the basis, if it can be a proven hardship, when variances to a special use permit have needed to be applied. So I'd like to state that indeed, there's not a hardship here. The analysis doesn't speak to hardship. So any assessment of variances, from my perspective, would be void of a hardship because there's not a hardship. So just to make sure that we're being clear. In terms of the underlying special use permit and the standards that are in place as part of Section 19.4, at least that was always the section with Fulton County, and I believe that we adopted that same standard in terms of special use permits, is that it's very clear that a special use permit can be considered only when certain standards, development standards are in place. And I think that the difficulty with this is that unfortunately, this particular application doesn't necessarily meet those standards. And, and that's why there's three variances, is because the applicant, as much as, as individually we, we feel for you from a legal perspective, I think that the issue, the issue I hear in a number of council members, is the fact that the application before us does not meet the legal representation and legal requirements as put forth in our special use permits, which is a legally binding policy that this body has adopted. I struggle with that because I, I think I'm known for consistent application of the law. Where I have a difficult time with this application is that it doesn't meet those standards. Primarily, it's asking for access to a local road. One of the first things... One of the first things under that special use permit requirement is that a special use permit will only be allowed if it does not access a local road. I struggle with that. Um, I think indeed it does set a legal precedent. Um, it concerns me. And I do believe that, um, while I do indeed appreciate the fact that there's been a business operating there, the reality is that, that those requirements were in place with Fulton County as well. So those are not new requirements. Um, those are requirements that have been in place and have been in, a requirement of the law. In terms of public safety weighing in, I don't read the interpretation of public safety as saying that the special use permit should be approved. I read that to say, if it was going to be approved, the only location that they felt would be safe short of going to Georgia DOT would be off of Taylor Road. I do think in trying to seek a solution always is that it would, it would be helpful to have sought the input of the Georgia DOT because that would remove that as a variance. We've heard from our staff that they recommend denial of the other variances in terms of encroachment and debuffer. And I would support denying those variances because I think, again, when we look at a special use permit, it needs to meet the standard. It needs to meet the law. When it doesn't meet the law, we're not upholding our policies. Part of my question, I guess going back to Carter, Mr. Lucas. If we wanted to pursue a, a dialogue with the Georgia Department of Transportation, what would that process look like? How much time would it take? And could we get an answer from them before we, uh, make a final decision? So that we could really better assess what options might be there for this applicant and still be consistent with the law?
Well, I think we could put a conceptual plan before them. How long it would take them to respond to that is really subject to their own workloads. There's no set timeframe for, for them to reply to some sort of conceptual plan. Um, you know, part of the problem is in how we've defined local roads. Uh, Taylor Road is a forty-five mile an hour road. Almost all of our roads within Milton are, uh, generally considered local roads, although they're not all residential roads. And so you've got a local road designation on a road that's not necessarily a residential subdivision-type road that a lot of those ordinances are targeted to restrict access to. So, uh, from, from, from our standpoint, from Public Works' standpoint when we reviewed it, while there are things that can be done to make the Birmingham Highway entrance safer, the better entrance was from Taylor Road. And GDOT will sometimes look at those, those different alternatives and say, "Short of other alternatives of access to this property, here are some things that can make that driveway on three seventy-two a safer access point." They may look at it and say, "You have access and you have had access from Taylor Road. Therefore, you have an alternative access to this property, and you don't need access to three seventy-two." So it's possible they could deny it just straight out.
And, and I believe that we've got some other situations whereby we have taken a conceptual site plan to the Georgia DOT. We've got something, I think, um, over between Francis and Highway Nine. And we've embraced the opportunity to take a conceptual site plan in that instance. So again, in, in the hope of being a consistent body, it would seem that we've, we've established some policies for ourselves whereby we've said, gee, if we think there's an alternative that could be a positive solution for applicants, but also a positive solution for public safety, health, and welfare for the greater community. And I heard Councilmember, um, Diversa talk about that as I did, um, Councilmember Tarte. I think that's really important is that we're here having to look not just at individual property rights, but at collective property rights and the impact to all of those, which is why we have policies and development standards. As an example, if we were to ask for some input from the Georgia Department of Transportation, and if we were to defer based on good legitimate data that we would need to acquire, um, I'm assuming that obviously things would remain, um, the process would continue, the applicant continue, could continue to operate until we got sufficient information. Is, is that accurate?
As far as them operating?
Mm-hmm. It's my understanding that they could continue to operate even though they were in violation and of code enforcement, that that code enforcement violation basically has stayed until there's resolution by this body. Is that correct, Mr. Gerard?
I would defer to the city manager, but I think that would be fine from my standpoint.
That's correct.
So, so if there was, um, a willingness by this body to try to look for a solution that would avoid having access off of a local road, primarily because our development standards and policies as adopted by this board say that we shouldn't have a special use permit off of the local road, it would be reasonable that we would perhaps pursue that dialogue, because I hear you saying that we have not yet done that.
We have not yet done that. That's correct.
Um, and also I, I do want to speak to the comment, Mr. Lucas, you just made about Taylor Road. I think that the folks that have addressed us here in this chamber previously and those from whom I've received a lot of letters and phone calls, they consider Taylor Ra- Road a residential road. Um, there are subdivisions, there's farms, there's residences. So I just want to be true to the folks that live on Taylor Road who believe that that is their residential road. Um, I, I wouldn't want to give the impression that we don't consider that a valuable local residential, um, area of our community because indeed it is. Consistent application of the law. I, I really believe we need to pay attention to consistent application of the law. Um, staff cited a special use permit on Birmingham Highway. I'm, I'm a little perplexed that there was not mention of a special use permit that was denied on Hopewell Road across from Champion's View. Um, Hopewell Road is probably less of a local road even than Taylor Road, and yet we could make the argument, um, that it, you know, had access to a road. My point being is that a special use permit was denied for a similar business because it had variances being requested. And in part, there's, there are consistent applications, um, from that perspective, that those variances were in place and therefore it was denied because it didn't meet the development standard. So I would hope that, um, both tonight and going forward, that our staff would look at all of those scenarios, um, for similar a- applications. Uh, I, I'm concerned. I, I, I do feel for the applicant. I understand that there's, um, been a situation, it, it, unfortunately, according to the law, it has been illegal, illegally operating. I understand that you don't like that word, but in terms of code enforcement, that's the situation that we're having to deal with. And the reality is that the legal precedent is of grave concern to a lot of citizens that live, uh, in Milton.
Okay. Thank you, I'm over. Karen, any comments?
Just a couple of things. Number one, I would like to see us, the next time we, um, update our, our zoning ordinance, look at what a local road is, because I think that that's causing a lot of, of issues here. Um, I believe that, you know, there are houses, there's farms on Highway Nine, on Birmingham Highway, on Arnold Mill. So, I mean, does that determine what's a local road and what's not a local road? But, so I really think we need clarification. I believe the initial intent of a local road was more of a subdivision-type road, not a road that had any kind of through traffic, which, uh, um, this road does have at times. You know, personally, we talk about how we want to make sure we maintain the rural character of the area. That seems to be something we hear over and over and over again, is how important the rural character is. And this kind of small landscaping business is very much rural character. I mean, this is what you see when you go to any true rural parts of the area. I think that the Planning Commission went to great lengths to make sure that this business maintained that rural character and that was not allowed to grow to become a huge commercial business that could lose that rural feel to it that it, it would have. I wish it didn't have to have the variances. Uh, the variances, to be honest, would be bothering me more than anything because I don't see any real hardship as much to the variances, even though there's really not any. They really aren't hurting anything. It just would be a whole lot easier if, if we did not have to have the variances considerations as, as part of it. I can very easily say how you've been operating for fifteen years. I'm sure Fulton County has been giving you business license and everything else and, and dealing with them. I'm not surprised that they suddenly realized you had a business where you've had a business license for years. So that's... That happens in Fulton County, and, uh, I, I think we're seeing over and over again where we're catching these things that Fulton County never did. So, and you're right, it would've been a whole lot easier fifteen years ago you'd been able to go through Fulton County and get it. Because at that time, there weren't near as many people up there, and, uh, you would not have had a lot of these issues, but...
Okay. Uh, do I have anyone that would like to make a motion?
I'll put forward a motion. Um, I would put forward a motion, I, not I would, I will. I'll put forward a motion, um, that we defer. And this, before I do this, Mr. Lucas, how long would it take, do you believe, to take a conceptual site plan to Georgia DOT? I mean, to take it to them and then to get, I know we can't predict, thirty days, sixty days? I guess we're gonna be back here in sixty days talking about another case for different reasons, but I mean, with thirty or sixty days?
We can contact them immediately. Time for a response. I'm not sure I could give you an accurate one, but, uh, workload...
Would you be more comfortable with a thirty or sixty day period for Georgia DOT to come back?
I don't, I don't know that we would need any more than thirty.
And the thirtieth day, Mrs. Marchifava, what day, which meeting would be our next meeting after thirty days?
September twentieth?
The zoning agenda in September. I don't think we could, thirty days wouldn't get us to the zoning agenda.
Okay, so the next zoning agenda would be which date?
I believe it's the twentieth, ma'am. I'll check.
September twentieth?
Second meeting is September.
Did you prefer the other one to the twenty-first?
Twenty-first. Okay, so assuming that the, I'll wait and see the confirmation.
Uh, September the twenty-first.
Correct.
That's September. She's talking about August, which would be August, um, seventeenth, if she's doing a thirty-day, thirty-day of the next zoning agenda meeting.
Uh, August seventeenth.
The thirtieth day would be...
August seventeenth doesn't get you thirty days from today's date. That was my concern with August.
And my question, I guess, for our city manager would be, would you be more comfortable with the sixty-day deferral if we were to go and seek input from Georgia DOT?
I'm more comfortable if we go that route than to just stay on a zoning agenda. I really don't have any preference, August seventeenth or September twenty-first.
Okay. Um, based on, and Mr. Nestor, if we were to defer, would a thirty or sixty day period be any more preferable to you than another? August seventeenth or the twenty-first of September, based on your schedule? Sept- September would be of the two. Uh, based on the applicant's input that, between those two, that September twenty-first would be his preference, uh, my motion, Mayor, would be to put forward a motion to defer Case U zero nine zero two, uh, with VC zero nine zero two at one five one five oh Birmingham Highway, application by Rob Nestor to obtain a use permit for a landscaping business on three point nine two six acres at a density of three hundred eighty-seven point nine two square feet per acre, um, according to Article nineteen point four point two seven, uh, along with three concurrent variances. All those are, are not reflected in our agenda. And that the purpose of that deferral would be to seek specific input from the Georgia Department of Transportation as it relates to access off of Birmingham Highway, uh, with the intent of seeing if we can't come to a solution that would allow a special permit to be considered without variances. That would be my motion.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Councilmember Bailey, a second by Councilmember Tarte, to defer this till, what was the day?
September twenty-first.
Do I have any discussion on this?
Yes. I, I would just add that I'm in support of this, um, deferral because I, I do believe that our standards are in place for a reason. And, um, before we start giving variances to people for no real demonstration of hardship, it's just kind of a convenience. Um, I do think that we need to pursue all legal avenues that we could possibly expend before we start giving variances due to the fact that this could set a precedent.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that is three, two, four, motion failed.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Zero, um, excuse me, U zero nine dash zero two dash VC zero nine zero two to the, uh, staff recommended conditions.
Second motion?
I have a motion for approval by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Lask. Any discussion?
Mayor, my only question is, um, he's recommended based on staff conditions. Uh, are you recommending staff conditions or the Planning Commission recommendations?
I am recommending the conditions that are set forth on page nineteen and twenty, uh, twenty-three in a packet, recommended conditions.
Because I think the Planning Commission added some additional things and subtracted some things. That's why I was wanting to make sure.
Those are what I'm comfortable with recommending.
Is that the Planning Commission?
Can we clarify that with staff?
I believe it is the Planning Commission.
Robin?
No, the, the Planning Commission, the only difference is that the Planning Commission recommended approval of Parts Two and Three for the, uh, existing greenhouse to remain.
And that's not reflected?
It's not reflected in the condition.
So if you, if your desire is to approve that Parts Two and Three, then you need to make a motion to include the approval of that.
I would like to, uh, amend my motion to include Part Two and Three as approved.
Can I, can I verify, Mayor?
Sure.
So I just want to make sure that, I just want to make sure that I understand the amended motion. It's to approve the special use permit with all three variances, even though staff is recommending denial of two of those three?
It's to be in concert with the Planning Commission's.
Including, including a recommendation for all three. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
That's what I'm hearing. Councilmember Lask?
I'll second the amendments.
Do I have a motion in a second for approval based on Planning, uh, Planning Commission approvals? Are we clear on that motion, staff?
Mayor, what I'm, what I'm gathering is that there's a motion in a second to approve, uh, U oh nine oh two as well as VC zero nine zero two, Parts One through Three.
Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
All three variants request?
Including, planning, including, including staff's conditions to those.
With the conditions as, as noted in the package. That's what I'm, that's, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay, all right, okay.
Any other comments?
Um, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, with regards to the conditions, um, on page twenty E, where it talks about limiting the site to one dumpster, can staff speak to where that's located and how often and at what hours of the day a dumpster can be picked up and dumped, basically? Uh, I know that we've got issues elsewhere in our city where, um, those hours have not been defined. So is there any limitation to when, when and where a dumpster can be located on that site? And if you could speak to that, please?
Um, the, the location of the dumpster is, um, it's behind these two buildings, so it's, um, kind of in that corner of, um, Taylor and then the south property line, but it, it's outside of the fifty-foot and ten-foot.
And are those considered deliveries or are those not considered deliveries?
Um, yeah, I'd have, I'd have, from my, what I understand, it's not very frequent that the dumpster is unloaded, but that would have to be...
If that's the case, again, I, I'm having a difficult time supporting a special use permit when variances are not, um, when variances are being requested because it doesn't meet the standards, but given that there is a motion on the floor, I would just ask that those that might be in favor of supporting a special use permit with variances, that perhaps some of this body would want to consider when and how often dumpsters get, um, picked up and the hours of that, because we've, we've got citizens that have experienced some difficulties with that in other situations. Um, I would also suggest that you guys consider, uh, whether or not we've had any discussion about the house on-site and whether, I know that this says it's being separated. Can staff speak to that as well? How the house is being separated from the actual special use permit?
Um, the house is being, um, leased to as a single-family residence. It's not being used as part of the business.
Okay, so the person leasing the business is not associated with your business? I'm sorry. Is your foreman. So I guess my question then is, is that, is that not associated with that? I, I, I'm just confused by that, and that wasn't a point of discussion since I had put forward a motion to defer. That did not pass. This is a discussion that I'm curious about. It's, can we speak to how you separate a house from the special use permit when the foreman of the business is living and on-site? And, and this may be a question for Mr. Gerard. As opposed to the special use permit applying to the whole of the property?
I was hoping the applicant was going to address that. Is that what the opportunity you...
The applicant just mentioned that it's the foreman of the business that lives in that residence, which I, I think ties the residence to the business potentially, which is my question for... Yeah, I'm sorry, my question was for our city attorney, just with all due respect. And, and my question has to do with the separation of use permit because originally it was for the entire three point nine. Uh, and I, I think it benefits the applicant to go ahead and address it now so that you don't end up...
Now, help me understand, Councilmember, is there another matter pending? Is that what you're addressing?
No, I'm just, because initially it was in, the special use permit request was the entirety of the three point nine. Is that correct, Robin?
Well, it's the entirety of the, the acreage, but we excluded the, um, square footage of that, either six or eight hundred square foot house, out of the density.
And I guess that's what perplexes me a little bit, is how do you apply a special use permit to the entirety but not the... And I guess that's what perplexes me a little bit, is how do you apply a special use permit to the entirety but not the dwelling? So you, I just want to make sure that legally you can do that, that you're applying it to the entire acreage, but you can segment so that that house would not then therefore in the future become part of that special use permit for usage. We, it's a, it's a wrinkle that had not been brought up before.
Well, it, it can, the only reason it confuses me is because I don't, I don't know that you can segregate, I mean, the piece of property is going to be subject to the special use permit and I'm not sure how you segregate it, I didn't block the property out.
And that's why I'm asking the question, because it was proposed that this condition was going to further limit the use of this property in the future, and so I want to understand, can you legally do that since that's one of the conditions that was put forth? If legally that doesn't make sense, whoever's looking to support these conditions, we need to be clear that these conditions actually do what they were intended, which was to limit the future use should this property sell, because a special use permit stays with the property.
It does.
So, could Mrs. McDonald, could you just speak to that, what was your intent in separating Alice?
Alice, Alice is your.
If I could do it. It's, what the intent was that you, he could not use the house as part of the business, that it should remain a residence. We don't control who leases it or who lives there, it's just, in this case, it happens to be his foreman. It's just like there are situations where people get use permits for daycare, but there's a house on the structure and people still live in the house. So that's what we were looking at, we were trying to limit this landscape business as much as possible to the existing structure that Mr. Nestor currently uses for his landscape business.
Excluding the house, and so, Mr. Gerard, I guess my question to you is, does that go, knowing the intent, does the condition as written provide you comfort legally that that will indeed protect it when that transfers in the future if the property were to sell?
Okay, I'm looking at the condition. Right, that would be a condition that would obviously supplement the, the, the use permit you all are, are about to adopt or about to consider, and yes, that would run with the land and that would act as a prohibition on the residents as, as being a part of the landscape business, so yes.
So you're comfortable with that legally, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, is no more discussion?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passed, Councilmember Zoner Bailey, Councilmember Diaversa, Councilmember Tartt in opposition.
Thank you. There are no items under unfinished business, we can move on to new business, will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Agenda item number zero nine eight nine two was removed by motion and vote, moving to item number two under new business, approval of a resolution to appoint two members to the stakeholders committee for the North Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan, item number zero nine eight nine nine, Mr. Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, the resolution before you tonight is to nominate two members from our community to represent Milton on the Stakeholders Advisory Committee for the North Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan. This plan, I think we mentioned a couple of weeks ago when we did the Milton CTP update, is a comprehensive plan being administered by ARC to develop a regional transportation plan in coordination with the five municipalities in North Fulton County. Part of that group and an integral part of that is the establishment of a stakeholders committee. It's a thirty-one member committee made up of various members of each municipality and other participating, um, um, chambers of commerce, DOT, other, other boards, and Milton has two appointees that they are permitted to make. Under that agreement, the mayor of each of the cities, part of the team, are required to nominate their members from their jurisdictions. Our two members would be Clyde Johnson, who is the chairman of our transportation committee, and Matthew Marietta, who is a staff member here with the city of Milton. The stakeholders committee is the committee that's going to, is really shaping the plan, they're going to be doing a lot of in-depth review of the data that's presented by the consultant, in this case, Kim Lee Horn, same group that's doing our transportation plan, and they'll, they'll really be the sounding body that goes through this data. While there will be public meetings in each of the communities involved with the program, the stakeholders committee is going to be the one that really drives and shapes the overall plan. So they're looking for really a diverse group to sit on this committee, um, a group that represents the views of, of each individual city, and I think they're, they're two good nominees that we have on that. And if there are any other questions regarding the committee and our nominations, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Lucas on that? Julie?
Mr. Lagerlum, just, this may be the first time that I've heard Matt's name posed for the second of those, and Matt's a great part of our staff and obviously has involved a lot of things, involved a lot of grant writing and a lot of other items. I, I don't know that Matt historically has had a lot of involvement with transportation, which doesn't necessarily mean that, shouldn't, he shouldn't be the point person. Can you just speak to specifically why you're recommending Matt?
Exactly what my thought process was there, sure, and Carter and I talked about that at, at fairly good length. We, we wanted to present a balanced team to be able to represent the city of Milton in this particular committee, and with the balance, with having the chair of the, of TSAC, a good balance to that, and also, I think when the mayor and I talked, it was pretty important that we have a staff member as well as somebody who's not a staff member so that there's some accountability there. And when you look across our staff at somebody who may not have necessarily the background in transportation, but certainly the critical thinking skills and ability to interpret data and represent the city well, and all those, all those things that, that Matt has that we've become accustomed to benefiting from, I think when you partner him with, with the likes of a Clyde Johnson, I think you've got a really good representation for the city of Milton. You, you asked a very good question, that's something that Carter and I talked about in detail, is what the pros and the cons of that were. And I, I think we decided that we were making a good, a good recommendation there, that number one, we had a city staff member as well as having the transportation background of Mr. Johnson, and, and Councilmember Hewitt has confirmed that Mr. Johnson is interested in participating on, on this committee even though he's not here tonight.
Appreciate that background, and do we know how often they're going to meet?
At this point, we don't, the first meeting will be in, in August, I believe.
Okay, and if ever there was a con, and I don't know if those are day meetings, evening meetings, but, uh, Mr. Lagerlum, if ever there was a conflict where one of those two could not be there, would we have a backup plan so that we would be certain that somebody would be representing Milton? We wouldn't have empty chairs at that table?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so, because if you haven't participated in the entire process, then coming in in the middle of a meeting is not going to be beneficial for that person or for the overall team. So, I, I think they will try their best to try and get those meetings scheduled where the entire group can attend.
Okay, terrific, and, and hopefully as that process unfolds, we'd have an opportunity to share and have dialogue with those representing this council because there's no doubt that is a critical, critical committee that hopefully will have some dialogue and opportunity for exchange.
Oh, absolutely, and there will be public meetings in each of the jurisdictions to go through the components of the plan. And the way that Kim Lee Horn has it set up, we actually have a project manager assigned essentially to the city of Milton to make sure that council's views and your community's views are brought forward in that process.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, staff on this? Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
I move to approve a resolution to appoint two members to the Stakeholders Committee for Full, uh, North Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan, Mr. Matthew Marietta and Mr. Clyde Johnson.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tartt, second by Councilmember Thurman, any discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you, Matt, for being willing to do that.
Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Our next item is delivery of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommendation to the mayor and council on use of Bell Memorial Park for travel teams, item number zero nine nine hundred, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, Mayor and Council, I'm going to start this one tonight, but I'm not going to speak long here at the, at the beginning, certainly happy to answer questions at the end. I want to let you know how we got to this forum tonight with this recommendation coming forward, as you know, you have a Parks and Rec Advisory Board that is comprised of members that you've appointed. Occasionally, from time to time, our committees or boards make recommendations that they want to bring forward to the council for your consideration. I, I want us to keep focused tonight that the, that the summary of this recommendation is will be presented by a member of that board, focuses on travel teams at Bell Memorial Park, and just bear in mind as, as we go through this, I think the, the format for tonight, which is going to allow us to have the best discussion, is to allow that recommendation to be brought forward to each of y'all from a member of that committee to accept then public comment after that, that particular portion is done, because I'm guessing that there is some public comment on this particular agenda item, and then we'll let the mayor coordinate a discussion as, as needs to happen. So if there's any questions before I turn it over to Mr. Shaw, I'm happy to answer those, if not, we'll move forward into the, Mr. Shaw presenting the recommendation of the board.
Okay, Mr. Shaw?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. My name is Mark Shaw, I'm vice chair of the Milton Parks Advisory Board, and I was just going to take a minute, maybe, maybe I'm out of line, maybe I'm not, but would it be sufficient for me to ask for some type of, just a break if everybody chooses to do so, just to have a chance to stretch their legs? If not, I can proceed, but.
I was thinking about taking a break in between here, but, so, if the world of the council, we could take a five minute break.
Is that, okay, I just thought this might be a good time to do that.
You want to come up here?
Come on.
Just a point of order, Ken, Ken, do we need to put a motion forward to do that?
Uh, you might want to make a motion to temporarily recess or adjourn.
I move to adjourn the meeting for a short break.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned into a short recess, time is eight oh five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Diaversa, second by Councilmember Hewitt, to re-convene our meeting.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting reconvened at eight sixteen. I think Mr. Shaw was.
Thanks for that break, I appreciate that. As I said, my name is Mark Shaw, I'm the vice chair of the Advisory Board for the Milton Parks and Recreation Department. I'm here to present the recommendations that we have unanimously approved at our meeting regarding the field space and travel teams at Bell Memorial. Before I get into the recommendations, I just wanted to, to state that, that we all believe that HYA has done a phenomenal job at Bell Memorial in the managing of the baseball program. I think it's safe to say that, that many people even outside of the city, Fulton County and other areas have heard of Hope Well, I know I did when I lived in Forsyth County. However, they've done such a great job that the growth and the popularity of the park has put a, I would say, a strain on the field space in use as this, as this park grows. And based on the, the returning potential recreational players and new recreational players, there may be no field space to accommodate the travel teams. And the problem really occurs is because of the travel teams do not comprise a hundred percent of the city of Milton residents. And I think it's, it would be, or the board believes, it, it's in the best interest to not assume what the recreational signups will be today, but rather to wait until January, the end of January of two thousand and ten, to where we know what the recreational signups will be from the city of Milton residents. That way we can plan and know what space is available at each one of the fields and govern ourselves accordingly with respect to negotiating the agreements with the travel team. Once and if there is a determination, the board feels that if there is space available for the travel teams, that there would be certain conditions that the advisory board would like to recommend for the travel teams to gain approval. With that, I'll, I'll move to, to state the recommendations that we have, again, unanimously approved. Our first recommendation, I believe everyone has a copy of these, is to not extend the travel team agreement with the HYA at this time. It now, it currently expires in December of two thousand and nine. Recruit Milton residents to join the HYA board. The city should actively recruit rec league parents from Milton to fill HYA board positions vacated by travel team parents. The city should also appoint a rec league parent from Milton to serve as the city's representative on the HYA board. The city's board representatives should play an important role in field scheduling, fees and other areas that require city's approval. Provide field space for high school feeder team. The city should continue to allocate field space at Bell Memorial to a high school, Milton High School feeder team as needed. Provide field space on Sundays for select teams. The city should amend the rec league amendment to allow HYA to offer advanced rec players the chance to compete on Sunday select teams. And in the event, after the, following the signups in January, in the event there is excess field space available, the board recommends the city should amend the rec league agreement to permit the use of excess field space by travel teams subject to the following. The city should have the right to approve tap travel teams on a case by case basis. Adequate field space, space should be allocated to rec league, select teams and feeder teams. Preference, preference should be given to travel teams in the oldest age group first. Travel teams should be subject to a seventy percent Milton residency requirement. Travel teams should pay fees equivalent to those paid by rec players. Travel team and coaches' players should be selected through an open and fair process based on standards predetermined by the city. I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity to allow the advisory board to come before you to present, present these recommendations. The board fully supports the HYA, the rec league and the travel teams, to the extent there is field space available for those travel teams. Our hope is that there is sufficient field space to accommodate both leagues during the year, but feel our responsibility as a board is to provide recommendations which will ensure the residents of the city of Milton have priority and full opportunity to the use of the city of Milton Park. Thank you.
Is there any questions from council to Mr. Shaw while he's still up here?
I have a question. Is there somebody else?
Go ahead, Councilmember Diaversa.
Thank you, um, thank you very much, thank you to the entire board for your recommendations. Can you clarify, um, on, if I recall, in the facility use agreement, it was a fifty percent requirement on the travel teams as far as Milton residency?
Yes.
And so your recommendation is seventy percent, so you're increasing that?
That's correct.
Recommendation, and then on the space for high school feeder teams, I believe in the facility use agreement, the high school feeder teams, what had been agreed to was, uh, Will's Park would have a feeder team for Milton High School, since that's the only high school we have currently, because we share, Milton High School shares Alpharetta and Milton Residence, and then Hope, uh, Bell Memorial would house and offer field space for a, um, high school feeder team, an eighth grade team, I guess, if you will, that age group team. And, um, so the city was going to kind of be the liaison between the high schools, is that something that you are still recommending and advocating? Just for my clarification?
Yes, we advocate providing field space for feeder teams.
I, I guess what I want a clarification on is the city still to be the liaison, or is that to be the Hope Well Youth Association that would be the liaison between the, the high school and for the, the eighth grade feeder teams?
I don't know that we discussed that, I don't know that was part of, of what our discussion was, if you don't mind if I ask the chairman.
Sure, I mean, I think in the facility agreement currently, it's the city, but I'm not sure what mechanism we have, and I just wanted to point that out from a.
It wasn't discussed, but that can be on our agenda if need be.
That's all I have.
Okay, do you have any other questions for Mr. Shaw while he's still up? Karen, Julie, Bill? Karen, Julie, Bill?
I don't I don't really have a question. Well, I have a question, but I guess looking at the agenda and delivery of the Parks and Recs Advisory Board recommendations, I take it from that we're not making any decision tonight. At what point would we make a decision?
Well, we'll, I'm going to ask for public comment, and then we'll discuss as we move forward here. Bill, do you have a comment?
Just one quick question again, Mark, concerning the residency requirement. How does the 70% residency requirement compare with Alpharetta's?
We may have to let Tom Mulroy answer the residency requirement.
Jim can speak after a public comment, when it's public, not yet, Jim. If Tom wants to speak on behalf of the board...
I believe it was 70%, 75% in Alpharetta.
All right. I do want to thank you guys, our whole Parks Recreation Advisory Board. You guys have put in a lot of time and effort, and obviously parks are near and dear to all of us, so it's very important. Thank you for bringing us these recommendations.
Thank you.
At this point, do you have any public comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Scott Staghowski, he is speaking on behalf of the Hopewell Youth Association Board of Directors and has filed the necessary affidavit.
My name is Scott Staghowski. I live at 3154 Chipping Wood Court in City Milton. Good evening, Mayor, councilperson, city manager and staff. I'm a resident of City Milton and have the pleasure this evening to represent the Hopewell Youth Association Board of Directors, in which I serve as the certification officer. HYA, as you may be aware, has successfully operated for over 15 years, the only public youth sports program for the citizens of what is now the City of Milton at Bell Memorial Park. I'm joined this evening by our president, Morgan Dunn, and six other members of our current board, who put forth a lot of effort in coaching and managing this program. Tonight, the council has heard the report of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and their recommendations. The issue at hand is the perception that the park is at or over capacity with the number of teams on each field. While we agree that we have a busy park and a large number of players, particularly in our spring season, we heard this similar concern last year in June of '08, and the crisis did not occur this spring, and we feel strongly that there will be no issues again in 2010. While we have participated in numerous hours and meetings with the city staff, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board since their formation in January, we do not agree nor support the recommendations as they are currently written. Further, we've provided detailed analysis and supporting facts from our last five years of experience and registration data for the citizens who participate in this program, and none of this information made it into the final recommendation. As recent as last week, however, meetings and conversations have started to build a revised compromise, as Mr. Shaw indicated, as we're working on an extension of this agreement to set sort of a threshold for where we'll look back as to where we're prepared to to support both the rec and the travel teams, and we're working diligently towards that end. For your information, though, I want to share a couple other comments, that even though we don't feel there will be a field space issue in this spring season, the Hopewell Youth Association is taking additional steps to ensure that this doesn't occur and to address the issue of crowding should it happen. For one, we're modifying the infield grass on our field two, and this will allow for overflow from the perceived crowding that occurred at Field One for games and practices. Secondly, we're currently in the process of obtaining field maintenance quotes for the field baseball field at Hopewell Middle School. As a number of discussions have gone on with staff and the Board of Education, we're already proactively seeking requests to get an idea of what maintenance costs would be so we can enter into discussion on how to bring this baseball field online. With a fifth baseball field in the City of Milton, we feel very strongly that there will be no issues of overcrowding and no concerns for residents of the City of Milton to be turned away from this baseball program. It's our hope and our desire that the council, the staff and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board continue to work to extend and renew the existing travel agreement, and we will move forward to continue to support and deliver a successful youth sports program for our citizens and the and the baseball players of this city. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim Craig?
My name is Jim Craig. I live at 1078 Colony Drive, and I live in the City of Alpharetta. For the last 15 years, I have committed a great portion of my personal time to serving this community, both with the youth athletic programs as well as as a Sunday school teacher. I'm not here to speak in favor of HYA, nor am I here to speak in favor of the Parks and Recreation Board. Rather, quite frankly, I'm one of these people that there's a reason you have this overcrowding problem. When I got here 15 years ago, you had 125 kids, and we worked very hard to build it up as a group of volunteers. Over that time, I have coached 50 teams in boys and girls, baseball, softball and soccer, in every age group that exists, from four up to 18, all-star teams, rec teams and travel teams. I run currently a teen mentoring program in which I take young kids aged 13 and up, boys and girls. We give them their first job. We make umpires out of them at Hopewell. We're taking kids into the community and trying to help grow them. Reason I'm telling you all this is this is part of the service that I have been giving to the area that is started out as unincorporated and is now City Milton. In addition to that, for the last seven years, I have served the City of Alpharetta on their Parks and Recreation Commission, and I've been blessed that for the last three years, I've been named the chairman of that commission. I'm up for reelection this week. Vote for Jim. The the point I'm saying here is, this community is, this is where I live. I have maintained for years, we live together, we play together, we go to school together, we work together. And yes, I live in Alpharetta, but I'm offering myself as a resource to you, the elected officials, to you, the city staff, the Parks and Rec Board and to Hopewell, if my experience can help solve any of these issues. I recently just presided over a one-year effort at the City of Alpharetta, where we discovered that our travel program for soccer had gotten out of line with the city's requirements. I do understand the requirements of a city and the need to serve their citizens, and I do understand the needs of a recreation entity to serve their their goals. Simply put, I get it. What I want to say is I'm here to help you. If you have questions, this is what I've done for the last 15 years, and I want to help. I would like to take this moment to point out one thing. There was a small inaccuracy in something that was stated. The current requirements that the City of Alpharetta for an Alpharetta-sponsored program that is at a level beyond recreation, regardless of the sport, is a 50% residency. All right? Wills Park, Alfreda Youth Softball and AYFA Football all have their forms of advanced level play. They are not bound by those same requirements as a partner entity, much like Hopewell serves as a partner entity with the city. The 50% requirement is only for programs that are run directly by the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of Alpharetta. Okay? That's all I got. So any questions for you? Happy to answer.
Do I have a question? Jim, Julie?
Jim, thank you so much. And one, I'm very aware of your efforts over the last 15 years and applaud them and thank you on behalf of a lot of little people that have benefited from all of your efforts, not to mention your children who are great umpires, I think, on a lot of fields. So just thank you for all of your efforts. I know that it has taken a tremendous amount of time. Thank you doesn't quite go far enough, but thank you.
Well, thank you. It's been worth every minute, believe me. I've gotten far more out of it, just being able to see the kids and watch them grow.
Well, thank you, and please keep it up. In terms of questions, when I just want to verify, when you mentioned the Alpharetta-sponsored program, so in other words, a team that is managed by the Parks and Recreation Department of Alpharetta has that 50%, but if it's a non-city-sponsored program, it's a higher requirement? Did I hear that correctly?
No, no, that's not correct.
So I want you to clarify for me.
No. The the entities, the partner entities, they pre-existed the formation of a City of Alpharetta Parks and Rec Department. And so they were embraced by the city and allowed to continue to operate with some modest guidelines to work with. They are encouraged to try and meet the city's goals and requirements, but they do operate at their own levels. Now, when they start to get significantly out of line, we sit down, we have a talk. But for example, the soccer program is entirely City of Alpharetta-run. So when we found we had soccer programs that were as low as 13% residency, I was one of the first screaming something I can't say in this room. That's just not okay. This is a city program, and you're going to meet a 50% requirement. Wills Park generally does very well. AYFA and AYSAs, they struggle a little bit to hit 50% residency numbers. AYSA especially because it's the only program in the community that serves girls. Between Johns Creek, well, I'm sorry, that's not fair. OC has a very limited girls softball program. City of Milton doesn't have a girls program. Roswell has a very limited softball program, so that's why you get a lot of it out of people. And so the partner entities are not required to meet those residency requirements for their advanced level play.
Is that true of Webb Bridge as well?
Webb Bridge is a program that is run entirely by the City of Alpharetta. Webb Bridge is the newest park that was built by the city, and the baseball program, as well as the soccer program there, are run by Alfreda Parks and Recreation Department. As such, it is required to meet 50%. That was what my effort was with the soccer program. We discovered that it had gotten away from the the goals of the city. We have corrected that. It took a year, it was a lot of hard work, it took a lot of partnering. It took a lot of people sitting down, and after we did some of this, then we started doing some of this. And we solved the problem. And, you know, right now, the city's soccer programs is at its highest residency it's ever been at in its existence.
Tina?
Thank you, Jim. Of course, you know how fond I am of you and support you tremendously. My my older...
Is it appropriate for me to say the same about you?
Thank you. My older son, Jim won his first championship out of all those games, and my older son was on his rec team. I think the proudest moment of Jacob's life, but it may have been one for you, too.
Absolutely.
But thank you. Anyway, I agree.
It erased a stigma of many years of coming close and not winning at all. Yes.
I know, I know. I think it suffice to say that, obviously, we all love Bell Memorial. I certainly do. My kids have played out there over the years, and one of the things that we're grappling with is all this change. And one thing that that took place when we became a city, among all the positive and wonderful things that happened as we became a city, is obviously the City of Milton became, you know, the the only city out of the new cities that only had one active sports recreation area entity of any sort, you know, that was owned by the city and run by, you know, a great association. And another thing that took place courtesy of Fulton County was that Wills Park, which was one of the main, as Hopewell, Bell Memorial was coming up through the ranks over the years that you were building and you and your board were building, one of the things that happened is Fulton County had required that Wills Park not have an out-of-residency fee, not have an out-of-citizen residency fee, and not have those percentages imposed. That's how we got to the point where the Wills Park Baseball Association didn't charge or didn't didn't require those those percentages. So, you know, we were seeing some of these changes happen, you know, obviously the city's grappling with how, you know, we make sure that and ensure that City of Milton residents that are clamoring on a weekly basis, it seems, for additional baseball fields as well as sports fields for all the other sports that are are so important to our our youth. Those changes are gonna, you know, are gonna happen. I thought it was important to point out the historicalness of what transpired when we became a city.
Yes.
And those are some of the reasons why we've got to this point of charging, you know, out-of-residency fees, having percentages. And and, you know, again, I thank you for for your comments, and we've used a lot of what the City of Alpharetta has done in the growing pains that you guys have had to go through in order to kind of start our our growing pains.
May I just, am I allowed to comment back?
Sure.
First of all, thank you for the very kind words. I'm very touched. To confirm, it was in 2002 that the City of Alpharetta first started making the decision to charge out-of-city residency fees. This was in response to some outcry we were getting from citizens when they were saying, wait a minute, as citizens, we're paying the burden of the bonds that floated. City of Alpharetta has floated more than $40 million in bonds for parks. The current assets of City of Alpharetta come to nearly $70 million, and the Parks and Recreation budget is approximately $6.7 million to maintain those assets. All right? And it's a sizable investment. And so the decision was made to go ahead and start charging an out-of-city residency fee. It was also at that time that they started saying that the advanced level play should have a minimum citizen requirement, and it started at 40%, and it moved to 50% just this past November. The move to 50% was to put it consistent and in line with the other communities that surround us. Roswell, at the time, Hopewell's at 50%, excuse me, John's Creek, other programs are doing 50% as their residency requirement. I was part of the team that researched that for the city.
Karen, do you have a comment, question?
Yeah, a couple things. Number one, as a parent of a daughter who spent every single weekend playing softball for 12 years of her life, I would have hated if she hadn't had the opportunity to play, which if they were, based on the fact that at the time we lived in unincorporated Fulton County, if all the surrounding places have had a requirement of 70%, she may never have gotten the opportunity to play, because that leaves very little space on a team for somebody that's not a city resident. At the same time, I understand that, you know, the city, as a city, we're the ones who have to pay to keep things up, and priorities should be given to city residents. There's got to be a balance in there. Doesn't sound like to me we've quite found that balance yet. I know your plate's already more than overflowing. Do you feel, based on what you've heard and the conversations you've had, that this is something that can be worked out so that it's not us having to choose between A or B, but it's an agreement that the HYA and the Parks Board could come together on with you helping to mediate it and come up with something that, a consensus, not something that both of them are overly overjoyed with, but something that they both can live with and are happy with that works out best for our citizens? Are they too far apart? I mean, there are times that you can never reach a consensus. I mean, it's just not going to happen. But is, do you feel like, based on what you've heard, that a consensus could be reached if we spent the time to do it?
Absolutely, Councilwoman Thurman. And as far as my desire, my ability to participate, there are some people who know me well, know my plate's overflowing. But let's let's face reality here. I'm here for a reason. This is important to me. I'm not on Hopewell's board anymore. Yes, I help with the umpires, but that's not a board position. It's just, that's the team I coach every year. I don't have any kids playing. My son's 15. He graduated out this past spring out of Hopewell. I don't have a dog in the fight, but I do, I got my heart. This is important. That's why I'm here. Yes, this can be solved. My opinion.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear, but I wanted to make sure I wasn't living in a dream world that something could be worked out, but you...
By the way, I neglected to say one thing during my introduction. I am the chairman of the Parks and Recreation of City of Alpharetta, but my comments here and my actions here are as a private citizen. I'm not speaking as a representative of the City of Alpharetta.
Okay. You go there. Just want to thank you for being here tonight and all the past work you've done and the offer to to help out in the future.
Happy to. It's my pleasure.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. Although we are, it doesn't call for any council action with recommendations here. Talked with our city attorney and and city manager, what we will have for council action coming up in in the future is, as we've discussed and heard tonight, to either renew or not renew a travel team agreement, which I believe is, comes up in December. But I think we owe it to the HYA and the... But I think we owe it to the HYA and our Parks and Rec Board and our city staff to, and again, the city attorney makes sure we're point of order, but, you know, just maybe to get a head nod, you know, it sounds like in order for field space on travel teams, sounds like the, both the HYA, our Parks and Recreation Board and our city staff, the biggest concern there or need was additional field space. Sounds like they are addressing that, working on that. I do know that the HYA and the Parks and Rec Board have been meeting and looking for some common ground to have some solutions. So, with that being said, I kind of want to get a nod to know, is there anyone that does not support the city moving forward, trying to work with HYA, Parks and Rec Board and staff to renew a travel agreement in the future? And Chris, if you want to add anything to that?
No, I think, Mary, you said it fine. Kind of where staff is at this point, and I think this is where we've grappled with this situation over the past couple of weeks, is I think that even though we have a travel permit that is set to expire in December of this particular year, the recommendation that you've been provided tonight, at the very beginning, indicates that the recommendation is not to extend that travel agreement. And whereas it might be something that you would say, well, let's just wait till December and see what happens and we'll make the decision then, I think, as being an equitable and good partner here with both our Parks and Rec Board as well as the HYA in Milton, I think we need to give some direction to the Hopewell Youth Association probably before December in that there are things that go into place now that we might potentially affect in December. If there truly is a feel that that is not an agreement that the city wants to renew in January, January first, I think at some point we've got to get to that and let the HYA know that because they're making decisions for their organization on a permit that they have every right to have, a contract that they have every right to have through December. But as I'm learning baseball, and I'm sure there's many in the audience that would correct my knowledge of how baseball scheduling works because I'm not an expert in that, is that decisions made today potentially have complications that occur if something is not renewed at the end of the year. If I boil it down to something that I might understand, it's one of those things that if you're gonna pull the plug on something, you'd rather pull it before you plugged it in before, rather than waiting halfway through the term of those teams being put together and then pull the plug on it. So, many of these recommendations that you have before you tonight don't cause immediate action to be needed. They are great for discussion purposes and planning purposes as we move forward. I would like there to get to an answer at some point so we can put this behind us and move on, no matter what that answer is, but item number one of the recommendations. And even if that is some middle ground at this point, if we've agreed, if we come to an agreement tonight that we're working together and to take some of Mr. Craig's comments and say that this is solvable in the future, I think even if we were to agree to a thirty-one day extension of the travel permit or something that allows us to continue to work together, that's certainly not my decision to make since it's a contract to the city, that's why this is in front of you all and I look for your guidance. But we've got to, at some point, we've got to get to some answers with that particular item and move on. And I hope that made sense and I hope that was succinct enough.
Yeah, I think, just to reiterate what Chris, you know, would need some direction, whether, you know, and I certainly would support HYA, working with our staff, working with our Parks and Rec Board, Mr. Craig helping out. To get to some common ground, I know, hopefully, we're close on field space, additional field space, which I believe will solve all the problems. So I certainly would support doing that in the future. Again, we're not taking any action tonight, but kind of want to get a little bit of direction for staff so that we can take action at some point. So, is there, that being said, is there anyone on the council that would not be in favor of everybody working together and even if, you know, if we need a thirty-day extension or whatever so that they can see what the signups are like and whatnot, but working together, is anybody that would not be in favor of doing that for staff?
I have a question.
Okay.
I'm always in favor of people working together, so I'm not responding to that question. I just have a separate question, though, that has to do with data that I think staff, not I think. I know that staff has had some questions about compliance with our facilities agreement and so I kind of want to short of everybody working together and of course, I hope everybody will continue to work together because that's what makes Milton an awesome place to live and play. In terms of compliance, though, I know we've got a legal agreement and we have been providing some data that staff indicated to us and I thought it was gonna be part of tonight's presentation, so I don't know, Chris, if you want to speak to this, but there had been some statistics provided to us that indicated that separate from moving forward and everybody working together, which hopefully we all are, is that we, I still think, need to address a compliance issue legally in the fact that we have some legal requirements that may not have been met. Could you just go ahead and speak to that?
You want Ken to address that, I mean, obviously?
I'll be, yeah, I'll be, go ahead. Yeah, I'll let the city attorney address.
Well, let me address it in two points, Mr. City Manager. If you want to at least outline the extent or present, because the city manager who has been keeping up with the issues that has the day-to-day, I can certainly address the legal impact.
And again, I think it had been presented to us at tonight's meeting because we've been kind of waiting for some of that data and it's been circling, so I think in the hope of arriving at a solution, at some point, we need staff to report batches and I had hoped that that was gonna be this evening.
Sure, I'll be happy to touch on it. That's what I've got in my folder here and I've got a couple of very capable staff members in the audience that probably should start making their way to the front. Hopefully, they've stood up and started to walk this way. You see two people walking towards the front.
One.
See one. Here comes two.
Okay, good. We have spent some substantial time making sure that the compliance data that has been received by the City of Milton matches against the contract. And when I talked with our city attorney today, I kind of framed, and he can say the best legal words here, you know, there's at no point in the future that I'm going to be able to answer the question honestly and legitimately into your direct question and say, yes, everything is in compliance, a hundred percent. I just can't do it. The day that it wasn't in compliance was the day that some of the deadlines that met certain, you know, compliance requirements were missed. We had to go after some data to be able to close the loop. I can tell you at this point, though, however, I do believe there has been a substantial attempt to comply with the contract as it exists. We have all sorts of data here as it matches up against the contract. So to be able to sit here and tell you that technically a hundred percent we are in compliance with this contract, I don't know that I'm in a position that I can do that. Although, after talking today as to what I would term where we are, I think that we are substantially in compliance with the substantive and material parts of the contract.
Is that good?
That's great. All right. And, you know, some of the things that we have yet to receive really don't substantially affect the contract. Again, this has been a work amongst both parties and we are both understanding this particular contract that was executed. Your Parks and Rec staff that you have at this point, Brad, and myself, were not a part of the contract negotiations, I'll just say that, that implemented this contract. I think it is safe to say, and it is my opinion, that the contract is very cumbersome and a very difficult contract to comply with, exceptionally cumbersome. I don't know how this thing became the adopted contract, just because it really takes almost a full-time person to just manage compliance with it. That having been said, I don't want to debate the merits of the contract that we entered into, but I want to say that the substantial compliance that I believe we have gotten to today shows definitely a good faith attempt. And I've got the folder here, it's a thick and lengthy document and I guess, Brad, do you want to weigh in at all?
Hopefully, he was one of those two to walk forward.
Do I want to weigh in at all?
He walked slowly.
Would you please weigh in, Brad? I guess, as our Parks representative, would you weigh in as to where?
Well, I agree with everything that the city managers have said regarding the difficulty of following the contract. One of the first things that I did when I came on board in October, November, was to try to read through all the documents, including the two different use agreements, one for travel teams, one for recreational teams. And they're difficult. They have lots of different deadlines, different amounts of days that, and actually, Matt can speak to this better than I can, but certain days that have to happen before a certain deadline kicks in which triggers another deadline, so, and one doesn't necessarily align itself exactly with the other, particularly in terms of a registration date. So it's difficult, a couple of agreements to follow from that standpoint. In terms of being able to adhere to both contracts, I would say that there are probably points where HYA has not followed the letter of the contract and there may be places where the city has not either. And I think that's where you get back into the substantial attempt to do so. I don't know if there was a question there, Mr. Manager, or not.
I'll be more specific. I think the question that had been, that staff indicated that was the most substantial was, and I think we heard Mr. Craig speak to this within the City of Alpharetta, it just having to do with percentage, residency, percentage of teams that are within city as well as fee structure. I think those are probably the two areas that pertain most to tax-paying citizens and I think those are the two areas that this body had, I think, the greatest responsibility to have to respond to from a contractual perspective because that's obviously what impacts the little people that happen to represent the families in Milton. So, I was really, I thought that we were gonna speak to that tonight. And again, at some point, we need to, if it's not tonight, but if we've got that data, just going ahead and getting that information and confirming where are we, I think, would be very helpful, just so we can proceed. Because I know that both HYA and the Parks and Recreation folks, all volunteers, have spent a lot of time. So, let's not waste our opportunity of being together to maybe exchange some information.
Let me go ahead and speak to that one directly. As far as the rosters and the residency requirement, that was where we had somewhat of a disagreement as to what was disclosable and what wasn't and what potentially would violate privacy issues and what wasn't. If, in fact, the Hopewell Youth Association had collected this data but not made it aware to the person that they were collecting it from that they intended to share it with a third person, we started to work through some privacy issues there and to work with our attorney as well as representation from the Hopewell Youth Association as to what exactly was disclosable by law. We have come to the agreement now, I believe mutually from both parties, that that information is something that can be provided to the City of Milton. I think I told you on the phone, and let me say for the benefit of the entire council, at the time that we worked through those issues as to whether or not this was truly privacy-related or not, we were to the point that it would have been, I don't know what the best way to phrase this is, but that data that had been collected would have gone into this folder and there was likely not a lot of stuff that would have happened to it. You know, for example, related to something else, there's not a lot of productivity in going and doing a lot of work on something if you're not gonna use the data that you discover at the end. The place that I worked with the Hopewell Youth Association and we came to an agreement on is that I could probably send you back to the drawing board to go produce all this data that we have these privacy issues with and if you give it to me after the fact, there's not a lot that I'm gonna do with it anyway. More importantly, now that we are in agreement that this is information that can be provided, it's something that we can be, that can be acted on in the future. So, to answer your question as to percentages, no, I don't have that. But I don't have that because that would have been work that would have been done by both parties and at this point would have really not been material. But we have come to an agreement that in the future, that information is not challenged with privacy issues and that it certainly would be provided to the city. And we could even go back and get that information now. It's not that the Hopewell Youth Association has said, hey, we won't provide it to you. It's more an issue of if they did provide it, what are we gonna, in fact, do with it?
I guess I'm a little confused because, I mean, the whole time my daughter played softball at Northport with Alpharetta, I mean, we had to pay a non-resident fee, so it was really easy. I mean, they asked what my address was and they looked it up and even though I said Alpharetta, Georgia, that's what I said, they still said, well, you're not within the city limits, you pay the fee. So, I guess I'm not understanding why that's so complicated.
It was initially complicated because there was some concern that we weren't allowed to have the information. And again, I think that we've worked through that and that's not an issue going forward, that any of the privacy concerns that were initially alleged, I think, have become non-issues. Our attorney has weighed in that none of those privacy concerns, at least in his opinion, that they might have initially had were legitimate privacy concerns. And HYA, I'm sure there's representatives here that could speak for themselves, but it's my understanding that-
I mean, I guess I had two choices. I either gave him my address so they could look it up and I could pay the fee, or my daughter didn't play, so.
Well, that was, maybe we're not talking apples to apples.
Yeah, that's not the same.
They absolutely had the information. The question was whether or not they disclosed whether or not they were gonna share it with anybody being a city of Milton.
Well, but I mean, I had to give it down at Alpharetta, so, I mean.
What Chris has explained, Karen-
Two different things.
Yeah, HYA had the information, but whether they disclosed it to the city or not was the question. So, but moving forward, you got that worked out.
We do have that worked out.
Okay. How would we determine that we were in compliance if we didn't have the data? How would we fulfill that facility use agreement if we were Hopewell Youth Association?
Ken, you want to address that, when we talked about that?
Well, a couple of things, and let me try to defend this contract a little bit because it's taken shellacking this evening. The contract was, first of all, a product of both sides working on it and it covers a complex subject matter and, you know, I draft a lot of contracts and this is eleven pages. I don't find it to be that terribly cumbersome. Now, I will say this, this was the first contract that's been drafted of this kind, I think, covering these relationships in this jurisdiction, and a lot of times when you draft a contract, it's a product of going ahead and then putting it in place. And some things work and some things don't and some things make a lot more sense on paper than they do in real life and that's just a product of working it out and kind of getting a good comfort level for the relationship. It may be that if the council is in interest in going forward on this, we would streamline some of these provisions. The best test of any contract is how it works in the real world. And that's what we've been able to see and I think the city manager has articulately identified that there are some provisions of this that make a lot of sense and are being performed by the HYA and there are some that appear to be troublesome for the HYA to perform or have not been performed perhaps as well as they can be. The contract contains default mechanisms and that is, if one party doesn't perform, there is a mechanism for, there to be legal consequences of that, one of which is a default. But it says it can be a default, it doesn't have to be. And certainly, parties to a contract have the ability to simply say, yes, I realize that you didn't do that, but you know what? The substantial and material portions of what we're trying to do are being performed and therefore, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna waive that requirement. And I'm not suggesting there's been a waiver in this instance. What I'm suggesting to you is, is I think the city manager has collected the data that he feels comfortable with and has been otherwise making sure that the material provisions are being performed. And I think, based upon my communication with him earlier today, that he feels comfortable that that's the case. Now, if, in fact, we go forward next year, for instance, and you say, Mr. City Manager, please go ahead and work on an additional extension of this contract or what have you, I am sure in the process of working with my office and working with the HYA and working with the various stakeholders, some of these provisions that simply aren't working or make no sense to work any longer would be culled away. It's very standard and that happens all the time. Things work, some things don't and we move on. The bigger question that I have, and maybe this forum isn't the right forum for this, but at some point, you need me to give the city manager and I some direction as, do you want to go forward and if you do want to go forward, upon what grounds you want to go forward? Do you want the contract to be reined in? Do you want it to be refined? Do you want it to be clarified? Give us a wide berth of discretion to bring you back, you know, a contract that's been culled that way.
I'd make a comment that, my comment would be that I support the recommendations of our board. We've put this board in place to make recommendations and that when they review, if it's the will of your board, to come back to review your recommendations along with the HYA board and maybe modify, maybe not, that, you know, from my perspective, we've appointed members to this board and, you know, I think you're doing a great job. I'd support, you know, you guys working together and making that determination along with working with our city manager and city staff and city attorney, if that is something that you guys would agree to.
Alan, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I too support the recommendations, or, excuse me, I support the board and because we did appoint these young men and ladies to provide us with the recommendations concerning this and what would remain paramount to me as we make a decision on whether or not to renew this contract would be, do we have enough space to support the taxpayers of Milton, sons and daughters? And I'm not, I'm hearing from the board that perhaps we don't. And I'm also hearing that it's questionable of whether the existing provisions in the contract that had to do with the percentage of Milton players on that team, it's questionable whether that's being adhered to. And I would like that information because I want to know, not only do we have the- And I would like that information because I want to know, not only do we have the contract in place that provides the needs to our citizens, that's the first thing I'd want to know. And given that we've had a contract with HYA for the last year, I want to know, had they adhered to the provisions of the contract specifically in reference to the 50%? And given that that information is not a privacy issue anymore, I'd like to know that. And, you know, that's fine. If there's, if we're off a little bit, I'd like to know how much we're off. Because as we go forward, I need to make sure that we're all operating in good faith with one another.
Okay, I'm going to kind of just move on down. Bert, you have anything?
Just real quick, I first want to just say that I think that recreational-type baseball for regular ability and that size type kid should take precedent over travel ball, but also want to, I don't want to be in the business of managing baseball. I think we've dealt with it, maybe not, but more than we should have already. I'd like to see everybody work together and stop doing this and get a little more of that.
Yeah, I agree, and I think HYA's done a great job. I think sometimes what, and I hear this a lot, and I think on the surface it sounds like the right answer, but in our case in Milton may not be reality. I think we all first would say, we want the citizens of Milton to come first and the kids first rather than outsiders, and we want to meet these requirements. But what we're not taking into consideration is, we can't provide, or at this point, we don't have the ability to provide to our kids in Milton all their sports activities. And if we are stickler to only have the citizens of Milton in this park or the huge majority, what happens to our citizens of Milton that play softball, basketball, lacrosse, football? They've all got to go to other... So, if we embrace that attitude and then the other parks embrace that attitude, all of a sudden, we may think we're helping our citizens by limiting, you know, and putting high percentages to only Milton kids. But what we're really doing is we're hurting all the kids, all the rest of the kids that live in Milton that want to play other sports. I think we need to, you know, be reasonable in that. I also, you know, truly think, I know with the Parks and Rec Board, has been talking to the HYA, city manager, our city staff, and with Mr. Craig's comments, I truly believe, and I think we owe it to HYA, who's done a great job for 15 years, we've got to give our staff some direction if we go forward with the travel team. Because they need to know in order to, I guess has something to do with their scheduling and all that. And again, I understand the Parks and Rec Board has advised against that, and I'm not going totally against what their recommendations are, but I'm kind of trying to pull it all together and let everybody work together to where we have a happy medium and, because what it's all about is the kids. And if you guys, HYA, can't tell the kids they're going to play and they go to Will's Park or elsewhere, you know, like Chris said, you either, you know, can't plug it in and pull it out, we need to, it's better not to ever plug it in. So, again, I'm certainly in favor of all three entities working together to try to move forward and come up with a, an agreement on the travel teams that everybody's comfortable with or pretty close to being comfortable with.
Well, I was admonished years ago when I worked for a contractor. He said, don't make a project out of a job. And I have the utmost faith and confidence in Jim Craig. I think reasonable people can come to reasonable solutions. If arbitration is in the, is allowed within this contract, I think it probably could be even if it were not, I'd like to see the parties get together with the help of Mr. Craig and let's work this out on a kind of a lesser legal plateau and let's get on with the program, so they say. Let's get on with the ballgame. I think there's enough experience here with the two groups and with Mr. Craig that I think we can come to a solution. And I'd like to see us move ahead with this immediately, if not sooner.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I concur that solutions are in our midst. I believe that good people can come up with some good solutions. I do support our Parks and Recreation Board. I think that they've done a fabulous job coming together with a lot of things that they've had to grapple with. And thank you for those that are here this evening. Thank you to those that are not here but have been here many times over the last couple of weeks for multiple and multitudes of meetings. Thank you to HYA Board and members, because obviously, it's a labor of love and I get that. Lots of us on this board have too many labors of love that are all volunteers, so we understand that it's about committing time and energy to good things. I do think it's important, however, that we have things in place that hold all of us accountable. I do think that it's important that we have some foundational values, first of all, that says we must serve Milton citizens. And I think that prior to having an agreement in place, we really didn't know if we were serving Milton citizens and residents primarily. I think we have been provided some data that would indicate that perhaps in some cases, we're not serving as high a percentage of Milton residents as we need to. I think when you look at a team and only one of the team is a Milton resident, we probably need to improve those statistics a little bit. I think that we heard from Mr. Craig that City of Alpharetta has found that balance. I think Roswell and other cities with whom many of our kids interact have found a balance. So, I would really strongly encourage, and I think we need to look for that litmus test within ourselves. And I think all of us probably are reasonable people, and if we sat around a table and said, you know what, we've got some teams that are not really representing Milton citizens that primarily they're made up of folks from outside of Milton, that probably needs to get fixed and looked at. So, I would just ask us to look a little bit deeper and be a little bit more honest with ourselves about the need to really make sure that we're promoting recreational ball as well as more advanced ball, but that we look to Milton citizens first and foremost, of course not turning away other kids. But we do have an expectation from our citizens that says we got to serve them. They help pay for those fields. And I don't think anybody else is going to turn away our kids at other facilities. I just think we do have to have balance. And I think that there's balance amongst us, and so I think we can find that percentage. My question in terms of timing, if you guys go off and you look at your recommendations, HYA and yourselves, with Jim's help, can come up with some, either modified or agreements based on what's been put forward. Where are we from a timing perspective? Because I know that there are teams being formed, there are some things being established. And a concern I have is that we not be so Pollyanna about this, that we don't recognize that if we don't make some decisions and if we don't set some and provide some clarification, which is important, it's important for HYA, it's important for our boards, it's important for the kids, that we have to sometimes make some tough decisions. Are we going to have a percentage requirement or are we not? If we're going to have it, I think we need to decide that relatively soon so we don't end up with yet another year where we have teams in place that maybe don't even come close to that 50%. And if we're going to agree to that, let's just be honest about it and say, you know what, we're not going to have a percentage requirement. Or conversely, if we're going to say we've got a facilities agreement, a lot of people gave a lot of thought to that. It was obviously approved by this full body that a 50% requirement was going to be required. At some point, we either have to say we meant it or we didn't, and that we need to figure out how to accommodate that. So, I don't know what the right answer is. I just know that to date, a lot of folks gave thought to that and they felt that the 50% balance was at least where we needed to be as a beginning. We now see a recommendation for 70%. Well, it's either 70 or it's 50. If it's going to be less than 50, I think we need to figure that out soon. I don't see a lot of other cities having percentages that are less than 50%. Personally, I think we need balance on our teams. I think we need to be looking a little bit harder and more honestly amongst our percentages, since we now are allowed to look at that data. Let's look at it, please, and let's make some decisions that are truly for the benefit of Milton citizens and Milton youth. And I look forward to those solutions. I do believe we can do more of this, and I think you guys can get there quickly, I hope.
Thank you. Now, one thing I would address, I believe we do have the, we've got 50% now. And basically, if they don't meet that, I think they have to do a waiver and extend every effort they can to get 50%.
And with all due respect, the numbers I was given showed that we were significantly less than 50%. And I think that's why I was asking, again, I would ask our city manager, that's why we need correct information from staff, Chris, is that I think there's a lot of different, depending on who you talk to, you get different statistics. We simply need facts so that we can make good decisions for everybody. Everybody deserves good factual information, whatever those facts are. But I know that I perhaps then haven't seen correct numbers, but Chris, I look forward to you and Matt providing those statistics. I know our staff's provided them to us before and they didn't come even close to 50%. I just want the actual data, that would be very helpful.
Karen?
I'll keep it very quick. I think y'all can work together to come up with something that everybody's happy with. I look forward to hearing what that is. One thing I would like to see, though, is I would like to see more Milton residents on the HYA board. That's something that you've recommended that I do agree with and I do believe is important, so I hope that will be part of what you do consider in the compromise you're coming up with that will work to benefit all of our children. And like I said, I think we need to be very careful. We don't want to come up with something that's so exclusive that if the other cities around us and counties around us came up with the same thing, our kids would have no place to play. So, we got to find the balance there, and I look forward to seeing what y'all come up with.
Mr. City Manager?
I just need to ask Brad to weigh in on timing as to how, you know, when Brad or other representatives that this affects.
Well, obviously, I mean, everybody said it needs to be done as soon as possible. I think that's a given. So, a lot of that would depend on the schedules of both the volunteer organizations, the HYA board and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. But I would say as soon as we could get back together with, including Mr. Craig as well, to sit down and just see where the common ground is. So, as soon as possible, as soon as we can, you know, I'll try to get everybody to huddle up here before we leave tonight, see if we come up with a meeting time and go.
I guess let me ask...
I'll tell you what, what I'm going to suggest, and we've got three people that represent different groups here that have already filled out public comment cards. Would it be okay if they came up and commented on this, Mr. City Attorney, or...
Basically, what I need to know is, and I think I need to know this from the Hopeway Youth Association, is what is too late to know about the travel permit, I think is the question I need to answer.
And let's, Mr. Attorney, can Scott come up here and address that, as well as the other two parties, since they've already filled out a public comment card or not?
That'll be fine, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. Scott, would you like to address that?
Scott, what I'm looking for, I guess, is if we're going to try to continue to work towards an agreement, at some point, there becomes a drop dead date. I'm sorry, I'm going to look at the back of my head, but at some point, there's a drop dead date that we have waited too long to be able to make a decision on whether or not we intend on extending the travel permit beyond December the 31st. I guess I'm looking for, based on the scheduling of events, what is that drop dead date?
Last week? Maybe. I say that half jokingly, but only because the agreement's in place, triggers a number of events that have already started to occur. The formation of travel teams have begun. Trials are occurring, they occurred yesterday, they're occurring next weekend, they're occurring in August. The current facility use agreement allows the formation of those teams up until the end of December. And at the end of December, we'll be faced with, we're either moving forward in some modified format, which we're very comfortable with moving forward on that front, or we're not moving forward, and then minimum 55 kids are going to be told they're not welcome in the City of Milton to play baseball, advanced baseball. And they'll have to find another place to go. And once the season has begun for those kids, they don't have a place to go. So, we've worked diligently since January so that we don't get to this point, that we have this speed bump that we're on, but we're already on a course to pursue and to our agreement, to move forward with our teams. So, at this point, the discussions that I've been hearing from our respective teams are to extend the travel agreement, not renew it, but extend it to create a buffer to say, let's take a look at the issues our rec versus travel, how many kids on field one? Well, we'll pick a time when we should look back at that and say, do we have the room for all these things to exist? I'm not, I'm a little concerned that the way the spring registration goes, that January 31st may not be the right date. Might need to be a little closer to February to complete the spring registration. But I think if we come up with something that's in that 30 to 60-day timeframe, then we would be very comfortable and very easy to say, we can extend the current agreement, as imperfect as it may be, and allow us to look and say, can the teams that we have formed continue to coexist on the now five fields that we have in the city? Is that out?
I think what I took from that, and I think what I heard, is that we may already be beyond that drop dead date. The plug may be already plugged in, so the option of not plugging it in may not be an I guess what I'm hearing, though, is that the possibility of a short extension allows us to continue to work together. Is that, is that what I heard?
Yeah, let me also ask, Scott, would you, speaking for your board, and I'm also going to ask Mr. Craig the same question and Mr. Shaw, in your discussions to date and with our staff and with the board, in your opinion, would you think that HYA can work out something that our Parks and Recreation Board's okay with and also with our city staff and work together? In your opinion?
Yeah, in my opinion, probably the opinion of our board, although the original recommendations are a conflict, the most recent discussions have indicated that we're willing to work together to find some new space and come to some new agreements. And it's been our attempt to try and identify the terms that are agreeable in the existing agreement and the terms that are subject to negotiation as you would in any business deal, and then work on negotiating those. And that's where we've been trying to go. So, I firmly believe very strongly that we have enough things on the table to move forward if we're moving forward with the travel program existing. If the mindset of the Parks Recreation Board and the City Council is that the travel program should not exist in City Milton, then we don't have a reason to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Go ahead.
Scott, is it your, is it the Hopeway Youth Association Board's opinion that they, that you don't agree with the not extending, obviously, the travel teams and with the percentage of Milton citizens? Are those the only two things? Are there other things on here that we should be mindful of that you wouldn't agree with?
Yeah, I don't have all of them in front of me. I mean, we can, we could talk about fees, we could talk about residency composition. I think that since that topic's been raised, those specific rosters were previously submitted pursuant to the contract back in the spring to Director Public Works at that time. It's my understanding, although the number might be just under 50%, it's, and there may be teams, individual teams that have numbers that are out of whack with 50, that some total of the program, and Jim can weigh in on how they measure it at the team level or on the program level, those, some level of the program may be just below 50% and the waivers were granted pursuant to the agreement. As it relates to other issues where we have disagreement, I think that, you know, the 50% residency requirement, I think, is a reasonable number. We can't, just as you don't require the city employees to live in the City of Milton, I can't require baseball players with a lot of skill to play at Bell Memorial Park. They go where they're best rewarded and have their best opportunity. So, to keep raising the threshold, makes it more and more difficult for us to recruit kids to play advanced-level ball, because those kids with the most talent are leaving out of the city to go to other programs. So, I think 50% is a very reasonable number and that's what's in the existing agreement. And I didn't realize from, Jim educated us, that other organization, partner organizations in another park, in another neighboring city, don't have that same requirement in their advanced teams or only have it in their advanced teams and not in their recreation program. So, I think we're, you know, we, there's a lot of other detail to drill down on in the specific bullets. I mean, the one that stuck me at the beginning, deep in it, is for the city to set the standards for trials, you know, that. I'll speak as a citizen, I just don't think that's the city's business. I don't think the board at Hopeway thinks that's the city's business either. That's what we do, we run the baseball program.
I guess what I was trying to get out at two and then to ask Mr. Shaw how he felt about it was, are we, are we going to be so far apart on what this board is recommending with what Hopeway Youth Association would like to see, you know, adopt and modify?
I'll tell you what, I'm going to continue with that was my path, and I don't want to get into like the discussion, you know, with all council law. And quite honestly, you know, a lot of these details are for our staff and our Parks and Rec Board and legal to work out. We just need to guide direction. So, I did ask the question, and thank you, Scott, for your input on HYA. Mark, Mr. Shaw, I'd like to ask you the same question. Do you feel after discussions tonight, meetings you've had, meetings with our city, that we can work together along with Mr. Craig and come up with a solution and also some, hopefully some more field space to move forward with the travel team?
I think it's the feeling of the board is, there's been a real struggle between all the numbers and all the information and all the projections and the assumptions that have been made. For us to make a decision now based on assumption and projections, I think would be, would be wrong. Because we're being asked to take those assumptions and just assume that these are the signups in January, why not wait until, until there's fact, until we know how many city residents, city residents want to play ball at Bell Memorial? And by the, by their own, by the own agreement that was executed and agreed to, that's the way it should work, that the recreational players take precedence and priority. And only after that fulfillment of that obligation to that park, then we can decide, and then we'll know, then the board, then the advisory board will know specifically how many teams, travel teams can be allocated to each one of those ballfields. Right now, there are really two ballfields that are responsible for holding... Right now, there are really two ballfields that are responsible for holding ages nine through 15. It is crowded, and it is a challenge. I think we've, we've taken the 10 pounds and a five pound bag to a new limit. I just want to deal, and I think that the board feels, they just want to deal with facts and to, and to actually know the signups. Because I have a feeling that if, if 180 or 190 city of Milton residents show up to play recreational ball, there may or may not be room for travel teams. And by, by as late as last week, I mean, we've put a lot of time and effort and hours into, into trying to find some common ground, the, the HYA has agreed that, that maybe that would be the best, is to wait, to find, to know the number, and then we can all plug it into our formula, know what the schedule is, and then we'll know specifically that no city of Milton residents was, was turned down. And I think it's our responsibility to give the priority to the city of Milton resident ballplayer. And that's, that's been our premise all along. So it's been a struggle to, to deal with assumptions and, and projections, and our, if they need to know now, which is what I'm hearing, because the problem is their fiscal year is July to June, is what I'm hearing. Tryouts and, and, and signups are occurring now, they're, they're basically signing those folks up, and, and the, their assumption is that they will have access to that park following December of 2009. I think it all goes back to, to risk. If, if, if they're, the understanding that, that it's their risk to take any actions beyond December, Jan, or December 2009, then let them to assume the risk, versus the city assuming the risk of having a ball team set now, and then, as Scott indicated, if we can't provide space for them, all of a sudden it's the city's risk that we're saying that, that they're not welcome. And I don't think that is the case at all. The, the board, the advisory board wants to work with the HYA. We're in full support and look forward to, to finalizing an agreement. But let's, let's get to, to where we know the facts and, and actually the number of players that, that want to sign up and play ball. And I think we'll have those numbers, Scott maybe said, said February, but middle of February of next year, to make that decision.
To clarify the question, and again, I want to ask Mr. Craig the same thing. Do you feel your board is willing to work with, actually four parties here, to come up with something, a solution for this? I've heard from each, each board, if we had one more field, the problem was gone. So not asking for the whole, you know, what you guys are thinking long term, but more, are you willing to sit down in the immediate future?
We're, we're more than willing. The problem exists is that they're taking some set of assumptions. We have another set of assumptions based on the criteria and the information that we're provided. There seems to be a disconnect about, you know, assumptions and projections. We can all make numbers say what we want them to say. So I'm just, I'm just saying for the advisory board to, to, to offer advice to the council is that we, we would like to have those numbers locked down and know specifically the number of registration participants that are in the city of Milton for that park. Outside of that, a recommendation at this time, today, would be not to extend the travel team agreement. Because we would be doing so and locking in the travel team for the, for the following year, which may affect a city of Milton resident signup in January. We just don't want that to happen.
Okay. Thank you. Jim, you want to comment on anything?
When you set the budget, do you have all the money in hand? Has there ever been a financial situation that resulted in a significant change in what you thought you were going to collect compared to what you actually realized you were going to collect? Do you not then adjust and make a combination? All right? What I'm hearing here is there's two schools of thought as to what that number's going to be. But if those two schools of thought can at least agree that, all right, let's go down one path and there's a contingency. And in one path of contingency, you've got a chance that HYA may be responsible to move a team out. And in another one, you run the risk that if all the existing teams may not be able to play. So what's the potentially least painful contingency? You know, what I'm going to suggest is view it more like a budget, you know, and what you have to do is you have to make a prediction, and then build into your prediction the ability to adjust. And the reality is, in travel ball, you know, you guys own the park. If you want to, you know, say no travel ball, you can do that. You can pull the plug. All right? You just, as with any choice, whether it's a city making a choice, or me personally deciding I want to buy another car, you know, there's consequences. If I buy a car, I can't buy a new roof, both of which I need right now. All right? But the, the point I'm making here is, if you decide on something, you know, be prepared for what the risk is here. And so if you have a budget of what your players could be, and what your contingency plan is, I think that's where you start to drive the compromise and start to say, okay, what is the out? Do you really have more field? Who's bearing the risk of making a couple teams go, one team or a couple teams go away? These are the type of questions that you have to look at when you resolve it. That's really all I want to say. Think of it as a budget, because you have to predict the future, just as you have to predict what your income's going to be, and then from there you start making purchases, new fire engines, new, you know, new city hall, things like that. And you do that based upon what you think's going to happen. And if it doesn't work, you adjust. Same thing with travel, with, with a sports program. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Now, I, I would agree that, you know, HYA may have their projected numbers, our Parks and Recreation Board has their numbers, you know, it's like Mr. Craig said, there's a, sometimes you just have to have an educated, use, educated guess on numbers and then adjust accordingly. You know, I don't know if our numbers are too far away, too far apart, or if there's something that, again, we can get the intent. I'm trying to get some direction from council. I know it's as clear as mud, right Chris?
Yes.
You know, I'll just say it one more time, and I don't want to go into a long lengthy conversation with each council member, but I would certainly support moving forward with our groups working together and our staff working together to promote the, the whole baseball experience, including travel ball. Not, not even sure why we have two separate agreements, but I would certainly support moving forward, trying to immediately work out a reasonable, as Jim said, a budget that all sides can look at, you can adjust as we move forward, and again, have to make, you know, have to make decisions as we find out later to see where our actual revenues or our, our player signups are. I would assume that HYA, after doing this for 15 years, would have a pretty good, pretty good idea where they'd be. But again, that's my recommendation, that's what, you know, I'm throwing out. I'm just going to start at one end and kind of ask for a yea or nay, and give Chris and our city staff some direction.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm good with Chris.
Yeah. Tina?
Yeah, as I said before, I'd support the two groups working together and the recommendation of our board.
Yes.
I support the mayor's recommendation. Let's go for it.
I support working together. I have a question. If you have tryouts right now, and if we have, the travel teams is what I'm hearing, and we're unclear, and I'll speak for myself, I'm unclear based on the data that's been provided to date, whether or not those percentages on a team basis, not cumulatively, but on a per team basis, because I think that that was the intent of that agreement, is that each team is supposed to meet that 50%.
Okay.
Is HYA?
Again, I think we're getting off. Let me, let me go through this first, and I'm going to clarify what my-
My, my concern is that we need to meet those requi, if we're going to continue to have discussions, I think we need to have an honest communication that says, at least this council member would expect that we would have each team level, since the tryouts are happening now, that you would be able to meet a balance so that we're representing Milton kids, and that we don't have teams that are 90 to 95% out of the city. I, I think we've got kids in Milton that can play travel ball.
And that's going to come back to us. It's going to be decided among the Parks and Rec Board, HYA, and our staff.
But it's a, mayor, we don't do respect, it's a timing issue.
It's something we can't decide tonight.
But it's a timing issue.
It is a time. And I'll clarify, because, you know, my recommendation is for our staff, our Parks and Recreation Board, Mr. Craig, and HYA to work together, and I know it's a timing issue, you guys need to know about travel. I'm recommending that, I would like to see them move forward on a travel, renewing a travel agreement amongst, amongst themselves. So I want to clarify that. I know Alan suggested, Tina, or you, is that different than what you?
My, my yes, is I'd like to see them work together. I'm not recommending that we renew anything, because I hear great concerns, and we haven't seen the numbers as to how we serve Milton citizens and have all the travel teams that we have. Now, maybe there's a modified version that you guys come up with, but I would leave that to your discretion and-
I would take that on the surface of the, no.
Okay.
Okay. Bill? Still sport it. Let's get on with it. Yes or no?
It's a, it's a mod, no, it's a, I want you guys to work together, but I'm not prepared to say that we should throw out the recommendation of folks that have spent a lot of time. So I, I'd like to see what they come up with. I hope you guys can meet very, very quickly, because we've got kids trying out for teams. And I would not be, I would not think that we're meeting the, the value statement of the city if we end up with teams that don't have a balance between in-city and out-of-city.
Council members on, may I, may I address that issue real quick?
Yes, sir.
Just, just for purposes of clarification, that until December 31st of this year, we have a contract still in existence. The contract terminates at the end of the year, and it still requires the thresholds you're discussing.
And I just think we need to make it clear, because it hasn't, it's been clear as mud, and I, I'm just prepared to make some declarative statements so that there's some direction to both entities. If you guys leave here tonight, and you don't have a sense of some of the values that we're trying to hopefully help you guys wrap your arms around, and, and I've heard everybody from council member Lo, Thurman, to Mr. Tartt, to council member Diversa, say that we need to have balance, and Jim Craig, and other cities, that we got to have balance on those teams. So if you're going to go off and talk, please make sure you're talking about residency versus non-residency fees. Please talk about the percentage of kids that are city residents, that matters. And thank you, Mr. Joy. We have a contract that says it should be 50%.
Exactly. And I think that's the premise we're moving forward on.
I just was unclear.
Our existing contract, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at, we've got our existing contract, even if we extend it or whatever, it was the will of Parks and Recreation Board, HYA, and our staff. Karen? And I'll be honest with Julie, I'm not sure if that was a yes or a no.
I'm not sure if it is, to be very honest, mayor, because it's, it's confusing, because we don't have, we've not been told whether or not we're in compliance with the current agreement.
And, and Joe, we're in support of, you're hearing that we're in support of travel together. I don't think it's fair for you to ask us to say yes or no when these two groups have-
I don't think it's fair, the hundreds of hours that our city staff has put into it, HYA, our Parks and Recreation Board, to leave here tonight with Chris scratching his head going, what do I do? With HYA scratching their head going, what do we tell these kids? And the Parks and Rec Board going, you know, what's going on? So I'm trying to get some direction here. Karen, would you like to weigh in? Yes or no?
I support your recommendation, feel confident that they will come up with something.
Okay, I think I've heard Alan said yes, Bert said yes, I said yes, Bill and Karen. Does that give you any direction, Chris or Karen?
We all said yes, mayor. We just said that we, we need a timing to, to, these guys need to get together soon, so we don't end up in the same situation 365 days from now. We're here because there's not been a compliance and an affirmation of where we are.
Exactly. In the two hours we've discussed this, they really could have gotten together and probably have pretty good-
Hammered it out.
If we could have let them do it, rather than listening to us.
Jim, you had raised your hand a minute ago. You have any comments? Come to the microphone. I think everyone here respects your opinion.
I made reference to the real problem we have with the travel soccer, and I do see analogy here. Some of the travel, there's actually travel teams at Hopewell that have existed longer than the city of Milton has existed. So I, I understand that. And some of those, I, I am aware that they have had some issues, just as at the, the travel soccer team, we had some issues. There was a certain amount of grandfather that was given there. But I have to say, and I'll say this to, I have people on the board who I consider my friends, if Hopewell were to move forward and create a travel team that didn't come out of the box at at least 50%, I'd be the one up here in front of you saying, shut it down. Okay? You know, so I hope that that message is loud and clear of, you know, you've got to set the standard higher, you know, and, you know, it's very possible to take a travel team, and I, I don't advocate this, but you can get a travel team with one Milton kid on it, and you can get the best kid from all the individual cities and you make a killer team. Is that really what you're trying to do? No. You want to set up an opportunity for advanced level play. And that program, I do believe, I mean, there's clearly, God, I hate the phrase, the new sheriff in town, this is the way things are happening and operating now, and I support it. I support the city's right to make sure that they're serving their citizens.
Thank you.
All right? And absolutely, if you form a new team and you're not at at least 50%, wow, shame on you guys, all right? I don't think you'd do it, but I don't want to, I just wanted to go on record and say that, that's the way it actually has to be. Sometimes you can't turn the ship on the dime. Sometimes you got to give it some time to turn. With the soccer thing, it took us, it's, it will take us three years to get this into complete compliance. All right? So sometimes-
Once you get it there, you can keep it there.
Oh, absolutely. Because, you know, these are the rules, everyone now knows the goals, the targets are, and we're getting there.
And, and just to clarify, you know, there's been no talk of trying to change that existing contract or, you know, lessen those numbers.
50%, 50% is a very valid number.
It takes some time to get it applied, you know.
It's a very valid number.
Because they've been there 15 years Fulton County wide, so it will take a little bit of time to get it.
Yeah, no, and 50% is a very valid number. I, I think you, you made a good contract there in that regard from the statement. Thank you.
Thank you. I know you don't want me to say this, Chris, but we've gotten anywhere.
No, I'm, I'm drawing pictures, trying to figure out how this works, and I wouldn't be honest with you at this point if I told you that I, I am, I do not know what direction to take this that is going to be any different than where we are tonight, by simply putting it groups that we have spent countless hours working with over the last couple of weeks. I mean, we have tried our best to get to a point that we came to something that was mutually acceptable between both groups, and, and we're just, I'll be honest with you, we're just not there. And I don't know that sending us away tonight to get back in a room with the same people, maybe I need to be more optimistic than I am. Maybe introducing a neutral party into a group that has had plenty of time to get together to come to something workable, maybe that makes a change. I don't want to waste your time, or our staff's time, or the Parks and Recreation Board's time, or HYA's time at this point. We have consumed a lot of hours to try to get to something workable. So unfortunately, I can't say I understand what direction to go tomorrow based on what I've heard so far tonight. There's just so many variables at play.
Are there, what are the two biggest issues? I mean, is it percentage of team and, and fee? Because that, maybe that would help us.
You know, I think, from what I understand, the biggest issue is HYA needs to know whether we're going to, in some form, format or form, renew their contract for travel team.
And that's number one.
That's the number one. I think the rest, I, it sounds like everybody's on the same page on the rest of the, the issues. So I think that's the only reason that we need, they're looking for direction now, is that correct, Chris, the, the main reason?
That's, that's the timely one, that's the one that has the opportunity to force us into future decisions, as I understand it, in December. I, I'm sitting here, just as a side note, I'm sitting here looking at the three waivers that, that the Parks, or that the Public Works Director at the time issued on February 26, 2009- nine to travel teams. Uh, there were three teams that requested waivers that didn't meet the fifty percent requirement. Uh, one was a waiver for four people, one was a waiver for one, and one was a waiver for four. So, a total of nine players required waivers that didn't meet the fifty percent requirement of the travel teams on February twenty-six, two thousand nine. Um, so as far as, you know, mass quantity, we're talking nine, talking nine players. We're not-
Right.
That's-
How many players are we, total? We five?
For a travel team?
Five.
Fifty, fifty-three.
Oh, no, no, no.
For, for travel here, we said fifty-three players. Um, and I've, I'm looking at the actual waiver that was issued by Mr. Drake at the time, and it was, uh, um, four players on ten U, one player on eleven U, and four players on twelve U.
It's roughly twenty percent.
But I agree with Mr. Craig that we shouldn't have, need any waivers ever on the new teams. So, by the time that those ten U people get up to whatever, I mean, we should be finished with waivers and all teams going forward as they're formed, when they get to the appropriate age.
Well, but new teams are every season. I mean, right now, you got, I mean, the, the, this premise that we have a team that lasts for six years, I don't think that's realistic. You guys are having new tryouts, and if we're having tryouts, hopefully new kids get an opportunity to try out. If it's the same team and the same kids year after year, we shouldn't have tryouts, 'cause then the city's giving the impression that kids don't really have an opportunity to try out. So, I, I hope that that's not the case. I mean, I hope that it's a yearly thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was responding to the statement that was made, but...
But realistically, you've got a core group, and, you know, if you could lo- lower the quality of the team and create a whole group.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, Chris's point, it was nine kids. Nine kids, that's minuscule compared to-
You know, reading through these, and we're probably going down a road that we don't even need to get to, at this point, I-
The point is we're just gonna be compliant.
I've got to get some direction from the council.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna be real clear, and I want everybody to say yes or no. I'm gonna support our staff moving forward with HY to renew at some point, whether it's an extension of thirty, forty-five days, or renew a, a travel, um, agreement, understanding the Parks and Recreation's recommendations, but also understanding, as Mr. Craig says, it takes time to take a fifteen-year-old program and slowly but surely melt it into an all-Milton program. I'm gonna raise my hand and say, "I'm supporting staff to work forward on a travel team." I'm gonna ask a yes or no, and if we come up to four people saying that, then you will have direction, staff will have direction, which way to go tomorrow. I'm gonna start with Alan.
I'm, I'm gonna have to say no.
Okay.
And the reason I'm gonna say no is because I have a point of order, and you have to stop, because I have a point of order. Um, point of order, we're making a decision here tonight, and the decision basically says that we will proceed with renewing a contract. That is not on our agenda.
We can't, we can't, well, I agree with you, Councilman Tartt, and I, I, it's not gonna be a decision to renew or extend the contract. That's not the way I was interpreting what the mayor was saying, and I can't support that, because-
But by default?
I think, well, I, I think, I think it is a decision to give staff direction, but a formal renewal will have to come before this council. And whatever happens tonight, no one would be bound to vote yes or no on that renewal. That's the way it would be.
You still vote yes or no?
From my perspective, this is administrative guidance to tell them what to do next. But you're gonna have to take formal action on an actual renewal, and it will, it's not this evening.
Based on where they are in formation of those teams, we will already set things in motion to be in a position to have to approve that, because they, or, or just screw a bunch of people, basically.
And, and, and I agree with you, but the position I would take is, is the contract expires December thirty-first, two thousand and nine, and if people take action that extends beyond December two thousand, uh, nine, they do so at their own peril, right?
Okay.
And that is the position I'm gonna say out loud, right here for everybody to hear me. So...
Okay, then yes.
Tina?
It's what we've been supporting all along, these two groups working together with our staff. Yes, I support that.
Yes. Bill?
Yes, sir.
Julie?
Yes, of course, I support you guys working together. Do it quickly, please.
Uh, Karen?
Yes.
Okay, clarify. Uh, you have direction, Chris?
I do, thank you.
And I certainly wanna take in Parks and Recreation's input and have them involved with it, but knowing that moving forward with HY may take a little bit of a tweaking period. Okay, what's next?
Mayor, council reports.
All right. Do I have any council reports? Karen?
I just wanna, uh, thank the, uh, staff and the council members that were able to attend the town hall meeting. We had a great turnout. We figured we had, based on sign-ins, and those that we know that didn't sign in, at least a hundred and seventy-five people there, which was a tremendous turnout. And I just, uh, want to thank the community members who were willing to volunteer their time to come and present, the staff that were willing to volunteer their time and come and present, and the, uh, council members that were there willing to come and listen, and the mayor that was willing to come and listen to the feedback that we did receive.
Councilmember Thurman, is there gonna be a report, action items, or something kind of generating from that meeting? So, I'm unable to make this other travel.
There is. I just got back from vacation last night, so it's not ready yet. But yes, we did have a survey. Um, I'm looking now and getting the survey. We've got about fifty, sixty responses. Looking at getting the survey available while even sent out, uh, to my distribution list to see what kind of response we get from that online. And I, I definitely would like the, to get the input. I think it's beneficial. So, if you don't have a copy of the survey, I can get you a copy of the survey, so you can please get your questions.
Would that be something that you'd be looking for feedback from our distribution list as well?
Yep. That's fine. I'd like it from as many Milton residents as we can get it from. The more, the merrier.
And I, I have a, a question. Um, my understanding was that this, I wasn't aware that we were going to be surveying anybody. Um, knowing that we've got two other surveys that are going out, we've, oh, we've got a survey that was originally sent to twelve thousand residents, and we've got a survey that our city is sponsoring. The survey, I think that Councilmember Thurman is referencing, I, I don't know, did, I guess Karen and Bill must have created that. Did staff participate in creating that at all?
They did not participate at all in it.
I, I would, would have to say that this is not a city-sponsored survey. The city has their surveys going out. This would be information gathering that Councilmember Lask and Councilmember Thurman have, if they wanna share, but, uh, it's not a formal city to...
Right. My, my point is, is that if we're, if we're going down a path, because we had somebody presenting what could become a zoning before us, I, I think we need to be a little cautious that we don't start to use a survey that's a non-city survey, that may or may not be statistically valid, to then support a zoning that may ultimately come before us. I, I just think we need to be a little cautious as to how we start to utilize survey information. And I, because it was brought up during reports tonight, I would just ask that we give some thought to how we use or don't use that, because then, I mean, all of us might decide to create a survey that we then submit and get input on. And I could just see this going down a path of whose survey's the better survey and which results are valid.
I, I would agree. I, I would consider, uh, for Councilmember Lask and Thurman, um, you know, the survey information, just as if we'd received emails from someone or whatever, but it's not a statistically valid survey across, but it gives, use the input as you, information you want, but it's not a city sponsor. And as Councilmember Bailey said, it's not, you know, statistically valid across the city. So, people show. Bill?
Just wanted to, uh, second what Karen said. I don't have much to, uh, add to it other than the fact that she and I did, uh, come up with this survey. We developed it on our own. It was at our own expense, and, uh, we feel it's just as valid as any email, uh, survey information that anybody else uses is to promote their own point. So, um, we can continue to take these surveys, and I think we need to. Uh, as more and more information gets out there and the development of the city, I think people need to know about it. Uh, I think we presented a lot of information folks out there weren't aware of, and, uh, based on that information, I think a lot of them made some very informed decisions. But, uh, thank you.
Okay. What else? Bert, Tina, Alan? Okay. Move on to staff reports.
Mayor, for the life of me, somebody asked me to make a staff report tonight, and at this point, I have no clue what it was. It'll come to me here. It, I believe it was out of community development, and, uh, I hope it wasn't important, but I'm gonna have to-
Alice is shaking her head.
Was it email?
Okay. Oh, what is it? Go ahead. We've been here a-
Alice, I know you asked me to, and my brain is just as much.
It was just that the financial model has been updated.
That's what it was.
At least with the new information, and so you're probably receiving a new email this week to take a look at. That's it.
Great report, Chris.
It was that. I'm sorry, Mayor, council. This, uh, this has been a trying day and busy past couple of weeks, and I apologize.
Well, then, you know, the only thing I'd like to add too, which I said this a minute ago, but we're not used to, these meetings as long as, as it used to be, but, um, I want to thank everybody for, uh, you know, spending the time and effort and discussion and all that on these, uh, subjects, and I'll thank staff for being here, and, uh, a few people that are still here. So, we appreciate everything that you're doing, Chris.
Thank you for getting us some direction on that last agenda item. That was, that has been a, been a source of, uh, and it's been frustration, I'll say, just because we wanna do the right thing for our citizens. And sometimes those aren't easy, but we need to continue to work through it.
If, whether it's this evening or later, if you could give us an update in terms of timing on library. I know I've gotten a lot of questions from citizens, um, both out of Saturday, Charette processes that were the community-sponsored meetings, um, and others where folks are asking whether or not the city is recommending a, a library location, or if there's an opportunity for them to weigh in. And we had heard from Deborah Ewing that there is an opportunity. Are we gonna post that just so that we're sure that we're seeking input from our entire community with regards to a library location?
Well, when I receive those questions, I forward people directly to Fulton County's website as their source of information, since that's a collecting point.
Right.
Um, I don't get many of them, but occasionally when I do, that's what I-
I just didn't know whether, if we were gonna have something on our website, 'cause people said they went to the website and didn't see anything, and I said, "I'll ask." So, I'm just asking, and perhaps that could be something that we put on our website, so that folks just know to go to Fulton County and not come to us.
We'll evaluate it, see what we need to do.
Thank you. Um, added by a motion and vote, we, uh, added to our agenda, uh, to go into an executive session to, uh, discuss potential litigation. That being said, I have a motion to second to adjourn it to executive session to discuss litigation.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adjourn it to executive session to discuss potential litigation.
A motion by Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Lask.
I'll agree.
All right.
Meeting adjourned, executive session at nine fifty-six. That motion was unanimous.
It might be something that we, we, we hammer some sort of, you know, stepchild this, this year, and then, then next year, you know, maybe it's not all but, you know, it's just...
What do you think, you know, what do you mean?
Oh, yeah, they keep those same kids. That, that's why the gyms are, you know, it takes a few years to fix it, 'cause, you know, 'cause you gotta let them kind of move on.
Whenever you decide to get your group together, that's what I was trying to do. I told them, I said, "Give me..."
I kinda wanna set expectations of who has it, though, to negotiate a contract. And what care the chickens are gonna have?
When it comes to terms, you're right.
It's a city contract.
You're absolutely right. We don't wanna be uncoordinated.
So, Joe said we think you might get that field?
It's, it's looking real promising.
I just don't think that sounds, I mean, if you get the field.
It's, uh, Patrick Burke has forwarded it to his director of facilities, who's asking what we're willing to give on a quid pro quo basis, which is why I'm trying to figure out what it costs to entertain us. So, I don't want to offer, I don't wanna offer a four-course meal if they're looking for a snack. Conversely, I don't wanna offer a snack if they're looking for a four-course meal on a quid pro quo basis.
Well, all the Y, uh, when the Y locked down their arrangement in Fulton County, all they do is send in a sprinkler system and say, "Hey, yeah, we'll, we'll fertilize it."
I've asked this guy, I said, "This is the first time Milton's had park events. I'd like to come down and actually meet with you and know what you've assessed it from other groups on a quid pro quo basis, so we don't throw a million dollars at it when we're looking for ten." And vice versa, you know?
Yeah. No, that's fair.
You don't give them money for it, or just-
Well, if you're gonna do it with the government, if we don't wanna lease it, we have to agree that the board policy is that they can't give away an asset unless they receive something of value, of equal value for what it would cost to rent. So, we might be able to say-
But they can't go any longer than five years with what the policy is. You know, on a quid pro quo, they, as far, but, but they don't, I don't think they're forcing it. The Y's been doing it like at twelve years or more, so it's like-
Once you get in, you're pretty much there, especially if, you know, commit scoreboard, you know?
Gym's the one.
Scoreboard, you know, who knows? So, it's, it's-
Field's off everything, but, it's, it's, we don't get the field. It's either tribal kids getting told they can't play, or rec kids getting put on waiting lists. That's, one of those two's gonna happen. And that's what Mark and I were saying, that the city will look bad, neither pays, and we're just trying to protect it. If you tell tribal kids, tell the tribal kids they can have teams, and they can't have them, they form and can't have them, they're gonna say, "Well, why'd you let us do that?" And if you put rec kids on a waiting list, they're gonna get mad. I don't, I, I mean, it's not just saying numbers never stay the same, but they're there in numbers, and, and I'm pretty confident they're gonna come very close to what, you know? We're not getting smaller. The city's not getting smaller anymore. And, um, you know, Manning Oaks is getting a district in, uh, Hopewell, so all those three hundred kids, someone is gonna want to go baseball in Hopewell, probably.
You need me, okay, I gotta move this thing.
Good night, y'all.
All right.
Night.
Night, Joe.
So, could we solve the world's problems today?
No, we got a lot of peace coming tomorrow. Yeah. But, yeah, you can't, I just want to just, now, I was telling them, we don't get the field. It's either tribal kids are gonna be kicked out, or we're gonna, we're gonna have a waiting list on the rec. One of the two.
Why do you say that?
I, there's enough kids. Right now, we're two teams, we're two teams over. We have thirty, enough rec kids. Things stay the same. Nobody else comes up there. We have thirty-four teams, we can accommodate thirty-two on sixteen teams. And that's assuming no growth. I know kids drop off and kids will leave, but you're also, we're also redistricting three hundred kids from Manning Oaks that live at Milton, to Hopewell, and they're gonna want, some of those kids are gonna want to play out there.
Those kids are probably already playing. Remember, where, like, when they're going, when they're, I don't know, when they're going to school, these- The redistricting, the redistricting here in school isn't an effect where the kids are playing the red ball. I think you are.
If you're going to school, your friends are gonna have-
Where, where are they playing now?
I don't know. That's why I don't know.
Okay.
They're either-
They're playing up at Hopewell now?
They're either at Hopewell now, or they're, or they're, they're at Will's now, because-
Yeah, they're at Will's, I think, or OC.
Now, Manning, now, uh, kids in Manning's Oaks, right? Are they Alfred residents?
No.
They're Milton residents? They're in Hopewell now, because the logic, the cost to play at Hopewell, I assume, the cost to play at Alfred now is staggering. We'll beat football, okay? You know, that's where, you know, I mean, uh, I mean, how do we, how do we, we're focused on playing, that's sort of your cost.
Yeah. Don't be too many names.
And I mean, you were-
I'll be talking about-
Yeah. Because, because, you know, because this issue, it's not gonna, we have to sort of people's whole softball. I mean, we start getting some, like, high grade fields. That's what's got it, okay?
Well, that's gonna be a burden.
That's gonna be a mess.
You get lower in your rank.
I'm glad to hear it.
I've got, I've been doing it for ten years. I've, I've, I've been doing it for ten years. Ten years I've been trying to do it.
We build that stuff. We, we have that stuff. We give a year fees, because you'll be able to use office facilities.
Yeah, sorry to hear that.
Well, we won't need them.
We're still, we're still here talking. You hit the point that you start moving, you know, see if those are building something, then I know-
We have chips, okay?
It's like, it's like clarifying, you know, the old Wendy's commercial, where it's, once you start getting some beef. I know, I mean, I've had the info and, you know, the info is actually where the most account, you know, with the elected officials and my own Parks and Rec people. If Milton had some offers, yeah, we'd be happy to negotiate. Because, you know what? Alfred is being squeezed on red hand, red stuff, okay?
If Milton had some offers, you know, we'd be happy to negotiate, because you know what, Alfred is being squeezed on rectangular stuff, okay?
I think everybody recognizes that, what I've, what I've thought for long, uh, at least for a year and a half, is that not a true Parks Authority, but there needs to be some sort of a consortium of, of Northern Fulton, Roswell, Alpharetta, Milton, John's Creek, to sit down and just say, what can you bring to the table? What can you bring to the table? And rather than step on each other. Fortunately, we can't bring much right now.
Right, right.
There was that, there was that one counseling in Roswell, if you try and get something started, uh, it was hard, Karen, but there's, no, but there is an effort to try and get something going.
See, that, that just makes a lot of sense, so there's one-
Chris goes, he's an executive.
Executive, yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm heading out, guys, if you'll follow me out.
I'm going home. I'll follow you out.
He's gonna get in touch with you. Yeah, he's gonna get in touch with you, and, uh-
I'm right now, I don't wanna police street stuff, so I go out here.
You can work.
Come on, DM.
I passed that last week, but, uh, good to go, is he, is he, uh, anything else? Okay, go nap, I'll go there.
Say something, change your schedule, because, I mean, it's, it's-
That's awesome, that's awesome, that's, can we, might get to do stuff like that.
Yeah, they will.
Yeah, give us, uh, let us know if you're gonna-
I'm not, I, I, I'm not, you know, there's, there's some things, I mean, you know what, you know what, because it's not turning over their documents, that's a motion.
You know what, it's, it's something's not, you know what, I'm not, either way, I was asked to do something, I'm trying to do fairly, check with my kids, play up there, and I'm trying to do what's best for the city, I'm not, I don't care if the travel people, you know, free of space out there, but, you know, and-
It'll be okay, it'll, there, there will be, there will be-
And that's, that was the perception, like, it's more drawn on the man, it's not, we were asked to do something, trying to do fairly, and I'm, I don't think that, John, there's always no rec team to shut up. And that's my concern, that's my whole job, if he gets the fit field, we'll find him.
I truly don't think that you'll have any issue with rec kid being shut up this year, will you at some point in the future?
Yeah.
But it will, it will be the issue.
When I, when I got my, my registration, they, they set, they put the travel teams in, they figure out how much fields they have, they have twelve spots. So when it gets bigger, they can't, they could wait for stuff, and I told Mark, we're doing, yeah, you're like, well, same clubs, kids aren't concerned, but there's a waiting list up, and then it doesn't fill up. I said, you can't do that, and they do that early on in the process, and I tried to, and I said, we, the, I got to, we, we, they, first of all, they have spots left, and then, they put up wait lists, they have every age group, mark wait lists, they actually want sold out.
Oh, you know why? You know why they do this?
Yeah, I know that, yeah. But, but they're setting the schedule on the travel teams, and that's just the problem, but if you're putting up, you're, you're the current kids, I'm signing up.
We could, we can discuss it another day.
Yeah, I, I'd love to sit down with you, I'm not, you know, if we, we can figure it out, you know, like I said, the big thing is what the city's gonna do, fifty percent, and the fees.
Fifty percent fees can be solved.
I don't care about seventy percent, I'm-
Seventy, seventy, seventy percent is-
The, the coaches, the coaches, I don't remember, it was seventy percent, how many coaches?
Um, they start out, okay, but what happens is, as the pyramid gets higher, you heard my point, I was making, oh, well, you know, so you better be at minimum, because as a team ages out, kids leave, residency numbers drop, so if you set it at fifty percent, and then you tell them, you better start it, yeah, I can tell them, you need to start at seventy-five percent, you're gonna be at fifty percent, yeah.
So I, I said, I was gonna, I said, Scott, go long way with this, I thought, I thought, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I said, what you do is to keep your tent up. I mean, this is my residence, it's a hospital, and we only had nine more, I said, this should be a concern about the field decision. So next day, I, I located in our conversation, and they, and they, or nine more coaches, they didn't even listen, I'm like-
Well, they did, certainly, they didn't agree, okay, and they, their position, cause I'll be honest with you, I tried to float in that, I have to, I tried to float a lot of different ideas, and I was trying to come up with ways to solve the situation. Personally, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think nine more travel should exist personally, okay? But from their standpoint, you know, the reality is, is that they, they feel they've got the numbers, and they historyed years of doing it, now, quite honestly, yeah, I gotta say-
We, we, we started with that, no, but more than it's gonna be, you know.
Yeah, well, you know, um, I, I mean, I, I'll say this to you, guys, really obvious, is, is at least fifteen years of data, plus there's all the data of the under-parks running that all show, you know, from eight to long, that's where the drop-off starts, kids just don't really know.
I, I said, I'm not gonna tell them that, I said, kids leave the circle, of course, they're gonna be very big, but, you know, we, we also figure out a way, why is all the drop-off so bad? Joe, like Kirk France, who was amazing, on a drop-off, they're thirty-two, he said, something's not right, you know, it was just too much of a drop-off.
Well, the reality, you know, the difference is, you know, I, I was pointing, Kirk France's program is a very competitive program, Kirk France's program is-
Well, they have much capital, it's all select.
Well, I mean, it's, and I'll be honest with you, I've run tournaments, which we invited new town teams to play, their teams, they don't play good quality ball. So the kids just stay there, you don't have a good, good ball.
I mean, Scott is my son, they're, you know, they just don't feel right, don't have, and, no, the more it doesn't hurt my kid, I'm not, I just don't feel right about it.
There's a time and place when you're gonna give your kid a chance to adapt, but when that time comes, you jump out, is it, you know what, it was a good run.
Well, you don't, no, it's not, it's, you don't want shorts, though.
Yeah, I, I, it's going for the first time.
Four, forty-one, Jordan, I think, is, well, um, he's at the travel teams, he's like twelve, I think, this is just crazy, I mean, how did he, he's playing travel teams, like?
He started at eleven.
Playing travel, it's all, Chris, well, I must say, he's so bad, I can't access. That's a lot of stuff, man.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, but he was a, he was a hell of a catcher.
Yeah, I got my- Give us call, we'll, we'll talk, I gotta get out of here, bye-bye.
Y'all done already?
Thanks for stopping, Matt.
Hey, man, you know, we really, we still like it.
Are you sure?
You just barely made it into the club, like.
I'm trying my best.
I see you all night.
Um, you could go ahead, I'm gonna come home.
I have a motion to, uh, reconvene.
I move to reconvene the regular meeting.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Lawson, second by Councilmember Deversa, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to adjourn the regular council meeting, City of Milton.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Lawson, second by Councilmember Deversa to adjourn our meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Meeting adjourned, ten, twelve, that's unanimous?